You're on.
The mic is now on.
Yep.
All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regular February meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will take the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. We will ask the appellant to step forward, be sworn in, be seated in the chairs to my right, and offer us any testimony that he or she would like us to hear. We do ask that the appellants confine themselves, if at all possible, to a 10-minute interval. Following that, we will ask the appellant to step down, and we will solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard. Normally, we first ask for those who are in favor of the appeal, and then for those who are in opposition to it. We suggest that the members of the audience confine their testimony to five minutes, if at all possible. Following that, we will check in with the code enforcement administrator to see if there are any comments on the case, and if any issues have been raised that seem to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to provide that clarification, not new arguments, prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. In most circumstances, the board will consider and act on each case prior to moving on to the next one. Our first case this evening is case 0016-22, 2022, 106 and 1/2 South State Street, UT Urban Transitional District, Kenneth E. Blevins, Sr. and Kenneth E. Blevins, Jr. owners. The owners wish to establish a retail store and seek a special exception under Article 28, 241J, Table of Principal Uses, H1, Sales of Goods and Merchandise with no outside storage of inventory. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the appellant? Please come forward. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Would you identify yourself for the record as you testify, please?
Kenneth Blevins, Jr.
Very good. Have a seat, Mr. Blevins, and fill us in on what you would like us to know.
We have two units on the first floor of the building at 106 and 1/2 South State Street. This is the north side of the building. It's historically been a hair salon with light retail sales. It's been a uniform place, just very light retail stuff. So that's what we're looking for, for this.
When you say "light retail"?
Just small products, you know, things associated with like a hair salon. There's a collectible store on the south side.
Right, but what do you expect your volume of business to be?
I don't run the business. I'm not sure.
Okay.
But it's definitely inside. It's only a 600-square-foot area.
Is the person who runs the business here?
Yes.
Okay.
He could feel even better on that, so...
Are you... On the first level, there's two units?
Correct.
And is... And are both of them vacant right now?
No. The south side is rented to a collectible store.
Okay.
And that's not part of this variance?
Correct.
Or is this special exception?
Correct.
And do you know, did they... I'll ask code enforcement if that store needed us, any sort of variance, but...
Whatever. I don't believe they did, but they got it through the city.
When it was a hairdressing salon, they did get...
A special exception.
A special exception.
For a hair salon?
Yes.
Right, for this unit that we're on, talking about this evening, yes.
Yes.
Okay, I don't need to burden him with it. I'll talk to you later. Thanks.
So who... You're the building owner?
Correct.
I see.
Okay. Would you like to touch on the elements of a special exception for us?
I'm not that familiar with what you're looking for.
Maybe the person who runs the business.
Is there... All right. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but...
Yes.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
Aaron Cantara.
Brittany Cantara.
Please have a seat. Is it Cantara with a K?
Ah, si. C-A-N.
I had a 50/50 chance, and I got it wrong.
Not a problem, sorry.
What would you like us to know?
Well, we are looking to establish a retail storefront for a retail business for apparel as well as firearms and ammunition.
Okay. Would you touch on the criteria for a special exception?
Well, why don't we go through them?
As it happens...
We'll use ourselves with it first.
We have a handy dandy form.
Yes, so the first one is that the requested use is specifically authorized in this ordinance, and retail is specifically authorized here by special exception. Okay, so...
Yep.
The requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. Can you explain why your business will meet that?
Yep, basically, we'll do business inside of the shop itself. It's, like Ken said, it's only about 600 square feet. We don't expect a high volume of people, at least initially. You know, we won't be obstructing any sort of pedestrian traffic, and we also have off-street parking out back as well, so...
And they comply with the parking requirements, Dr. Hutton?
They didn't before. It's an existing nonconformity.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So is it... Dr. Hutton, is it correct that if it's an existing nonconformity and there's a change of use, they... That does not trigger a...
This is essentially...
A variance?
It's one nonconforming... It's one special exception used to another special exception used, so we're not making it more nonconforming, or we're not changing... We're just... It's like one conforming to another conforming. You don't have to look at that again?
Okay.
Because it's one special exception to another special exception, which are expressly authorized in the district.
So how many total spaces do you have off-street?
I believe there's two out back.
Two out back. We also own the building behind that, and there's room for probably six cars in front of that.
Okay.
For both buildings?
Correct.
And... But that includes the collectible store?
Yes, and on-street parking, on the west side of South State Street, as well as Harrison Street.
Do you have a sense of how much foot tra... Like, how many customers would you be expecting at a time on average?
We're really not sure. This is our... This would be our first go at a business, at a concrete storefront.
Right, and it would be mostly evening and weekend hours, as we both still have regular full-time jobs. So, once again, we're not expecting a high volume, you know, maybe a... Maybe, what would you say, about a dozen during an average evening?
I would think so.
I guess, yeah.
And what about deliveries? Will deliveries come in big box trucks, or...
In most cases, probably standard freight, I would imagine, yeah.
Yeah, I would think standard freight.
So like an Amazon truck or...
Yeah, Amazon, UPS, FedEx.
Do they have to go through site plan review, Dr. Hutton? No? Okay.
Nope.
All right, so...
Are you currently an authorized firearms dealer?
Correct. We have our FFL.
How long have you had that?
Since, I believe, April of 2021.
And do you currently have a store?
No, we currently are home-based, and we're looking to expand into a storefront.
So the next criteria is the requested use will not overload any public or private water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal system, nor will there be any significant increase in stormwater runoff onto adjacent property or streets.
Yep, I don't believe that'll be a problem in the course of our regular business, so I think we're all set there, yeah.
Requested use will not create excessive demand from municipal police, fire protection schools, or solid waste disposal services, and if you could particularly address the police aspect of that.
Yes, absolutely. So per federal ATF regulations, we are required to have a basic security setup. We're definitely going to have a camera system. Also, per ATF regulations, we have to install bars on the windows and make sure the door is secured as well. And then our plan basically is to lock up everything in a safe at the end of each business day. So absolutely, everything will be locked up.
And we'll be... We'll have multiple security systems, so it won't just be like one system only. It'll be...
Motion-activated.
Motion-activated lights, you know, cameras, just... We want to make sure that we're operating in a safe and professional manner.
There's a reference in one of the letters that we received from one of the neighbors that there's been recent thefts, or attempted thefts at similar firearm retail establishments in New Hampshire, which I'm, off the top of my head, I'm not... Don't know about yet. Have you heard? Is that true?
Actually, yes. McPherson Firearms in Brentwood. We're actually really good friends with them. They've provided a lot of valuable info to us over the years. Yeah, so what happened was, they somehow got into the store and smashed the cases and grabbed the firearms out of the glass displays. So to mitigate this, we're actually going to take them out of the glass displays and lock them up in a bolted safe.
And then also, we'll be installing those bars on the doors as well as windows to keep people from trying to enter the store by breaking and entering into the building. We want to try to keep that... You know, we want to keep that secure so that these don't end up into the wrong hands. We don't want people that aren't supposed to have them to have them. We want to make sure that we, like we're going through this process here tonight, is we want to make sure that we have everything set... Safe, secure, and professional. We don't want... We don't want anybody to have something that they shouldn't have.
Will you be the only employees?
Currently, yes.
Yep, at least initially, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, I think, there's two more. The requested use will not create hazards to health, safety, or general welfare of the public, nor be detrimental to the use or out of character with the adjacent neighborhood. The proposed location is appropriate for the requested use. So obviously, there's been some concerns raised by our butters.
Yep. So, once again, our security protocols definitely won't pose any sort of threat. Any firearm that we sell absolutely goes through a federal background check, no exceptions. And then, as for the character of the surrounding neighborhood, I don't believe we'll do anything to change the exterior or the overall look of the building.
And what are the uses that sort of surround your property?
I know that Harrison Street, we have repeats collectibles next door. Otherwise, I think it's residential, if I'm correct.
Yeah, around the corner on South Main Street, there's the Feathered Friend Brewery, Smoke Show, Sannels, a couple of hair salons, some real estate offices.
Can you describe to me how the background check works from a customer who comes in the store? What are the steps that take place?
So a customer wants to purchase a firearm, and depending on the type of firearm, we either call the New Hampshire gun line, and they do an instant check over the phone. They're actually pretty quick about it these days. Or if they purchase a long gun, we go and call the actual FBI NICS system, and same thing, they do an instant check over the phone.
But they would be having to fill out a 4473 form?
Yep, which we are required to keep on file for 20 years.
That would also show... They'd have to show us ID, so that they show that they are a New Hampshire resident and can have the firearm that they are looking to purchase, and... Or ammunition or accessories, you know, and that they are not a... And with the 4473 background check being performed, it will show... It will keep anybody who's a right... Who's not allowed to have a firearm to have them, you know. We want to make sure that... That those who can legally own and safely possess a firearm can, and...
Do you do the background check just for the weapons or for the ammunition?
Just for the firearms. There are currently no laws in place for the ammunition to be having a background check.
And what happens... I don't know if you don't have a retail store, but what happens if somebody is denied through gun line or...
We wouldn't be able to make the sale. We'd have to... I mean, assuming that we... This is actually a part of our policy. I'd prefer that we hang on to firearms, even if they're in pending status, and then obviously denials, we would take the... We would obviously keep the firearm, refund their money in full.
Because... Yeah, because I don't think that we could legally transfer that to them if they were in a denied or pending status.
Oh, no. Absolutely not.
So...
Yeah, I guess I'm part of wondering, and you probably don't have the experience, do customers become belligerent, or is it problematic if they...
We would, at that point, escort them out of the store. I mean, we definitely can't make the sale at that point, for sure.
Yeah, if somebody's being belligerent, there's no way I'm making a sale of them, if they would pass a check or not.
Oh, I understand.
Right, sure.
I just don't know what the experience is when people deny or take roachy about it.
Some people, having worked for the state, actually, on the gun line before, a lot of people are pretty understanding. They'll go through the steps to actually figure out why it was denied, and then go through their legal channels. But yeah, occasionally, you do get one that ends up being belligerent. But there is an appeals process that they can go through in those cases.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And there's no test firing of any kind?
No, 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 no.
Oh, no, absolutely not. Everything will be unloaded.
No, no, no rounds in the chamber.
Nope, definitely not.
About how many firearms would you be expecting to have, like, for sale at any given time, like, on-site?
It's a small startup. I don't know. You got a number in your head?
Currently, I would think no more than... No more than like 50 at a time.
Fifty?
Yeah.
It would be the current number, because we're small. We're just starting out with just me and my wife, and we're... I don't know. We don't have a big budget.
Right, yeah, we're kind of building it from the ground up.
We're just... We're just starting out, and we want to make sure that we can satisfy most wants or needs, but, you know, we have to also abide by the law, what we can sell, what we can't sell, as far as legislation that's currently or in the future, that, you know, magazine capacities and such. You know, we have to make sure that we follow all those federal and state guidelines as well, so...
Yep, definitely going to stay on top of those kinds of things, and they do change quite a bit, too.
Any consignment you're going to...
We might do some consignment, but it'd be... Or selling of used, but I'm going to try to mostly focus on new, and I want to keep the number small so that it's manageable.
So I'm just part of, you know, if people are consigning or selling used, people will come... Be coming in with weapons?
With a weapon, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would... If they were to come in with a weapon, I would prefer it be, like, in a case or a...
Yeah.
You know, I would definitely...
Be locked away or secured, yeah.
Strongly suggest to my customers, so that if they were to bring something to me, that it would be in a case or something, not just like walking out with a rifle in their hand.
Yeah.
Obviously, you have less control about what walks in the door as opposed to what walks out the door.
Correct. Like, we can control what goes out of the door. Like, most firearms, when you purchase them from a vendor, will come with some sort of box or some sort of casing.
Disabled, so...
Yeah, and they would... They would have the trigger guard or their...
Yep, trigger guard or pistol lock.
You know, installed when they leave the building, because it's not going to be something that'll be readily used. You got to take that home, get your ammunition, and you can safely do whatever you do with it in a private manner. But I'm...
Okay.
You know, I have less control of who's coming in and what they're doing with it. But if they are being ridiculous with it, I feel I have the right to turn them away.
Yeah, we have... We've already discussed it. If ever anyone comes into the store and we just get, you know, something really seems off about them, or maybe they're acting strange, we will not make the sale.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the permitting registration process the same for handguns as it is for shotguns, rifles, or semi-automatic military weapons?
I think for the long guns and shotguns, they are similar, and then for the handguns, they are separate. They have... Since they've had the legislation changed to where the background checks go between NICS or the instant background check system.
So every weapon that you would sell would have to go through some sort of registration?
Correct, yep.
Or background check?
Yeah, everything would be a background check. You know, the ammunition or the accessories, they are exempt to that because they are not currently legislated to have any background checks.
There's been some talk about issues about large-scale magazine capacities.
Yes.
How are you going to deal with that? Are you allowed to sell a 20-round, 30-round magazine?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Currently, yes, because that would be a standard-capacity magazine on most firearms. I believe most of your handguns would be 17 and under. But, you know, if legislation was to come up, that...
We would immediately have to abide by that legislation, yes.
And then the last criteria is the requested use is consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance and the master plan.
So, yeah, urban transitional zone. What are your thoughts on that, Ken? I figured you'd know more about this than we do.
Yeah.
Can you help me understand how?
They have a product. They're selling it. It's a small operation. It's consistent with what's been going on there. It's just a different product, and that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you. What was the product? It's... There was a hair salon on both sides at one point, and that, several years ago, left. And what's been in there since?
Repeats, collectibles, and toys.
Okay. And did that require a special exception?
I don't believe so, but it is retail. Historically, that building, when I was a kid, it was a small grocery store. It's been, you know, more if it was a kitchen, cabinet place. So it consistently is just a small business launching point, essentially.
And Dr. Hutton, where is it? It's this one right here on the corner?
Yep.
On the north side.
Right next to Harrison Street is the...
Yeah.
Yep.
While I have the microphone for just a sec, I just want to remind the board a port of information that the city can't regulate the sale or possession of firearms, so we have to be very careful. This is a retail establishment. It doesn't matter if they're cookies.
They also are going to be selling t-shirts.
Yeah, well, t-shirts, accessories.
I just want to remind the board that legally, we cannot regulate the sale or possession of firearms. We have to be very careful where we tread in terms of what your reasonings are for approval or denial of the application.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you for that. Is there anything else you'd like us to know? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So much for your time and your patience.
Yeah, thank you.
Not sure what the white noise was all about.
Yeah, that was strangely timed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Before I solicit testimony, we have three at least letters from neighbors who...
And I believe there was one in your packet as well, in your packet, and then...
Right. And then there are... Are there three others? Because I have two others.
Yeah, so three total.
Okay. So there are three letters from neighbors. Before I solicit testimony from the neighbors, I want to reiterate what Ms. Hutton just said, which is that even though you're concerned about the use, we do not have any control over what they sell in the store. We cannot rule on the basis of that. So you will be doing us all a favor if you don't dwell on that, because that's not something we can control. However, the specific issues and the special exception, we do have the ability to address. And so if you have things to say on that topic, we'd very much like to hear what you have to say. If you get into the subject of what's being sold there, I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you to stop, because it's not relevant to what we do. So, is there anyone here who would like to be heard in favor of the appeal? Please come forward. Is there anyone here who would like to be heard in opposition? Please come forward. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
May we have your name as you testify, please?
Nico Bradley.
Nico? Thank you. Have a seat, please. What would you like us to know?
So I have a couple... I have a couple thoughts on the requested exception. First off, the previous exception for the hair salon, which was previously a bolted, where it's generally an appointment-based business, so limited parking requirements at... Per time, right? So that's a difference between the previously accepted exception versus what they're asking for now. So parking, as everyone knows in Concord, is a constrained resource, and the city of Concord has just removed parking directly in this area. They removed at least three parking spots over the last six months. So having... That was previously parking.
What did they do with them?
They put up no parking signs.
Oh, they just...
That'll do it.
Yeah, they put up no parking signs, actually, on private property. So not only... So there... This is a residential area, so the residents who live there are no longer allowed to park off-street on this particular block, and they will be parking across the street because on the same street side is no... There wasn't parking before. So it's constrained to one side, and it's further constrained with the recent reduction in parking, which would be directly where these shoppers would be parking. So that's an issue that I'd like to bring up. Also, this is a residential neighborhood, and I will... I'd like to state that it would change the character of the residential neighborhood. I've heard conflicting statements just a few moments ago about whether it would, in fact, change the character of the neighborhood, being that there wouldn't be... the neighborhood, being that there wouldn't be any changes to the perimeter or outside of the building, and then I also heard that there would be bars put on the windows and doors, and as a residential occupant in the neighborhood, that's something that would definitely change the character, as there's no businesses or houses with bars on windows, and that's generally, um, limited to areas of high crime, in, in my experience, living in different cities, streets that have bars on windows are usually a mental cue that there's, um, more of a crime issue. Um, so, changing the character of the neighborhood, I would say it would definitely do that, um, you know, being a block, a half a block from the neighborhood playground as well, and having it not look inviting to kids to play in the neighborhood with bars on the windows and such, um, yeah, so that's, that's, I guess, all I'd like to say, and also, one, one last thing is, that building is, was a converted residential building, um, I think we need more housing in our city than retail establishments that aren't supporting the parking needs that they might require, so I just wanted to add that, but, thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Do you, do you live in, do you live nearby?
Um, yeah, Crescent Street.
It, how, I mean, is there a, a difficulty parking for the neighbors and stuff?
There is now.
Because of those spots being removed?
Yes.
So that's relative, so before that...
Absolutely, yep, because directly across is, um, previously, we had six off-street parking spots, and that's been reduced, just on my property alone, by two and a half, and I understand that it, um, has restricted the parking, um, for the house next door, too.
Do a lot of the residents park off-street, or do they mostly park like in their driveway or in their garage?
They will be parking off-street now, because, because they took away the off-street parking, so, again, it's just the confluence of restricting the parking supply at the same time you're asking for the variance, um, so I would suggest if you're gonna accept this variance, to remove the restriction of the parking, um, but that's, I guess, another issue for another day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
May we have your names as you testify, please?
Yes, my name is Eric Feldbaum.
Last name again, please?
Feldbaum, F-E-L-D-B-A-U-M.
Ma'am?
Rakia Medley.
Could you spell that for me? Yeah.
Medley, M-E-D-L-E-Y.
As in, a medley of tunes?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. What would you like us to know?
Good evening, Chair Carley and members of the zoning board, my name is Eric Feldbaum, and I live at fourteen Badger Street, which is located at the end of Harrison with a clear view from my living room of the applicant's proposed location. I just want to point out, I was not notified directly by the city's butter notice and questioned, um, how the city determines who receives those butter notice, but regardless, I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the permitting's request, uh, of a variance. My fiancee, Rakia Medley, and I purchased our home in two, 2017 with the expectation that this neighborhood was safe, inviting, had minimal traffic, and was not surrounded by retail establishments. By nature of having a new retail business, there's expectations that it will create traffic and increase congestion in the area. The proposed locations of businesses are the corner of a busy street, South Street, or, I'm sorry, South State Street, and a residential cross-street in Harrison. The store would create an increased need of parking, which we've just heard, which is already limited, um, on the business's property, and would put an increase of roadside parking, uh, which is currently being used by residents of the neighborhood. This would displace residents' ability to park, uh, which during the winter months would be exacerbated with snow on the roads. The neighborhood consists primarily, uh, primary residents, which have the appearance of traditional New England homes, uh, we, as well as many of the people in our neighborhood, take pride in the look and feel of our community. Recently, we invested in a new siding of our home, and in doing so, we made sure to keep the character of our house and neighborhood. The proposed retail store outlines that it plans to have metal bars on their windows, which will be out of character to the adjacent neighborhood and even to the business next door. No other home or business in the area has permanently, permanent bars affixed to their windows. I would like to bring to the board's attention recent burglaries impacting New Hampshire firearm stores. Last January, WMU reported a string of eight firearms shop burglaries, including one in Brentwood where over twenty-one guns were stolen, and another one in Milford where over twenty guns were stolen. The U.S. Bureau of Alcohol and Tobacco and Firearms provided a statement to WMR in the response, and I quote, "When firearms are stolen from legitimate gun stores, they risk falling to the hands of violent criminals and pose a serious threat to community safety," unquote. To me, this po, this proposal is clearly a hazard to the safety and general welfare of our community. I also want to point out that there is a park located a block away from this proposed business on the corner of West Street, which is used to people of all ages for recreation. Once a sale is completed at this store, at this retail store, and the purchase is removed from the building, there are no guarantees that our community will not be affected by an individual made the purchase. However, this retail store in our neighborhood will lead to increased police presence in our neighborhood, which could negatively affect the ability for people to enjoy the park and other outdoor activities in the area. We want to ensure safety in our community. The proposed location for this retail store is not appropriate, does not meet the special exemption, uh, requirements outlined in your zoning, zoning, zoning ordinance, Article twenty-eight, Section nine dash three, B two. I request that the zoning board deny this variance application, and I thank you for your time.
Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, sir.
May we have your name, please?
Michael Summerlin, who live at thirteen Badger Street.
What would you like us to know?
So, I wish to speak regarding this variance in opposition. The location of this, uh, proposed retail establishment is about four houses down, four buildings down from where I live, I live at the other end of Harrison Street. Um, it's a wonderful neighborhood, uh, it's had its share of minor problems over the years, such as drug dealing from the corner of Weston Morton Street, and petty thievery from unlocked cars, I guess that's part of being on the transition zone. We've addressed these issues as a neighborhood through care and vigilance. A building that's, a retail establishment that's gonna have a security system that has flashing lights, and maybe sirens, I'm not sure, um, and residents that live above the property, above the retail store, um, to me raises some safety and general, uh, enjoyment of property issues. Um, the, I, I, I know, I know we're not supposed to talk about it in terms of what they're selling, but this isn't a donut shop, or candy shop, or a bike and ski shop, like other retail establishments that have been in that area, um, and it's hard to separate out the potential for safety issues with respect to this product. Students walk past that location, go into the various schools in the neighborhood, residents living in the apartments, like I said, above the proposed location, um, neighbors walk their dogs at all hours of, on these streets. I would contend that the requested use will create hazards to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, and will be detrimental to the use of and out of character with the adjacent neighborhood, and that the proposed location is not appropriate for the requested use. Um, I'll just conclude my remarks with a simple request that you not permit the presence of this type of use in a residential neighborhood.
Questions from the board? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Do.
May we have your name, please?
Adam Bentham.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Bentham?
Yeah, so I'm a resident, uh, over on twenty Badger Street, and I just want to, um, note like everyone else that it's kind of out of place for, uh, the neighborhood, this is a residential neighborhood, and, um, there is a park where my son plays, right next door to, uh, this, uh, proposed building, and, you know, it's not, uh, the type of, uh, business that is really, um, is in typical use for the neighborhood. Normally, people are coming to businesses in these neighborhoods from locally, so you go into your, uh, hairdresser, you go into the comic book shop, it's drawing from the local, uh, community, you know, this is generating business from outside of the community, uh, probably from long distances coming in to, uh, specifically, uh, buy guns, right? It's, it's not the type of business that really is what we're looking for, where we're trying to, you know, get a walkable neighborhood with bars, uh, uh, on the windows, and, um, yeah, we just, I don't feel like it would be in the spirit of what the neighborhood is.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
May we have your name, please?
My name's Cara Byrne, I'm in the butter on ten Morton Street, um, and I want to, along with the concerns that other people have brought up already with the, with the bars on the windows being out of character with the neighborhood, um, and the parking situation, um, I wasn't aware of the situation on South State Street, but I know in Morton Street, um, which is right around the corner, if someone's out of parking on Harrison, they'll just go right around the corner to Morton Street, we just, uh, just like South State Street, lost all of the parking, 'cause they made parking only allowed on one side of our street recently, so we're also already short parking spaces for the residents of the neighborhood. The other concern is, which I think it's really smart that they'll have all of the safety precautions with the lights and the security systems, but, um, I know, out walking in the neighborhood, a lot of people have motion sensor lights, and when they are going on and off, I know my neighbor across the street has it, it shines in my bedroom light every time somebody walks, in, in my bedroom window every time somebody walks by, which I find is a nuisance, luckily, where we live on a very quiet street, and there's not that much pedestrian traffic at night. Um, I think that that is a concern, if there's, especially when they're talking about being open on nights and weekends, it's gonna increase, um, traffic during the nights and weekends, which will impact families when they're home, um, and those, those, the security lights, where I think they're important, are, I find them to be a nuisance, and there's enough traffic, foot traffic on South State Street without that retail store there, that those lights are gonna be coming on oftentimes, and I would imagine the people on South State Street who live across the street and in proximity to that will find that to be a nuisance also. That's all I have.
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Bear in mind that this is not a plebiscite, reputation of what we'd already heard many, many, many times before does not enhance the argument.
Got it.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
What's your name, please?
Jim Schlosser, S-C-H-L-O-S-S-E-R.
What would you like us to know?
So, I'm a physician, I, I've been working for twenty-two years in the Veterans Health Administration, and retired last November, and I would just like to share with the planning board that, uh, su, veteran suicide is a big issue in our community and our country. In twenty-twenty, nearly forty-six thousand Americans died by suicide, but the veteran suicide rate was fifty-seven percent higher than that of non-veteran adults, and that rate of veteran suicide has actually been increasing over the last ten years, and access to guns is part of that issue, so I would request that, I won't repeat the other issues, I'm gonna, I live at seven Badger Street, so around the corner, and I think both the character of the neighborhood, the increased demand on police, uh, services, and the health and safety of our, of our community would be negatively impacted by this, this kind of retail establishment.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board? Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone, anyone else who would like to be heard? Any comments from code enforcement?
Uh, I just want to reiterate that this is a progression of retail and service businesses in this building, so this isn't, uh, this isn't new, and there is no exterior construction proposed, um, replacement of windows and doors and those sorts of things don't require permits usually, so that's, it's considered interior, so I just wanted to clarify that those things are not considered exterior construction.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Blevins, uh, or Mr. or Ms. Cantara, would you like to offer factual clarification in response to anything that you have heard?
We're on the same page. But I would like to, um, clarify, as far as what the community has said, was that we would plan on having those bars being inside of the building and not to the exterior of the building to change the look or the feel of the community. As homeowners ourselves, I understand how that can be important to, to those that live in the area. Um, I'm not implying that I would be putting spotlights on the outside of the building to illuminate the homes around us, to, um, cause any nuisance to them, that would be contained with inside the shop as much as I possibly can, you know, and, uh, I'm not sure what to say about the parking situation, but...
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of going into it with the current parking situation the way it is, we really didn't have anything to do with that, um, but we will...
Isn't that your parking lot sort of shown there?
To, the parking lot to the right with the, right there?
That, yeah.
That is not ours.
Yeah, that's not ours, that's not part of this property.
That's attached property right next door.
Okay.
But we do have the on-street parking on State Street, on-street on the right-hand side of Harrison, as well as on the left-hand side of Harrison.
Okay, so Harrison has parking on both sides?
Correct.
And do you have any onsite parking?
Yeah, between the two buildings.
Okay.
There's spaces to the rear of this one, and then in front of the one behind it.
What's in the other building?
It's warehouse space.
Is that parking used by the warehouse?
It's generally empty in the summers for winter storage.
Winter storage.
Yeah.
Is parking time restricted in there?
No, I don't believe so.
And how many customers would you expect to have at one time?
Uh, as a small startup at one time, I, I mean, it's only a six hundred square-foot space, I would say maybe three, four people max.
Uh, maybe, maybe ten at most, but it, it's not, it's not gonna be a big, you know, retail space, we're not coming in as, as a larger business, we're, we're just, just small startup, you know, we're just trying to find a location that would be, uh, good fit financially as well as for the area. There are no other, uh, locations like this in the town of Concord, and we understand that that would be opposition to the products that we'd be offering because of that.
Right, and the layers of security we offer, we're hoping will mitigate that, at least to the best of our ability.
No, I mean...
Very good. Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony, oh, no, no, there's one more thing to do. I do have some letters here, uh, from neighbors, this one is from Catherine Lesswing, who is at twenty Badger Street, and she urges us to deny the appeal for the special exception. She suggests, she indicates that she and her three-year-old son and soon-to-be newborn have serious concerns about the health, safety, and general welfare, welfare of the public because of the proposed use. She's, contends that the applicant provided no information to, uh, as to how retail would not create a hazard to health, safety, or general welfare, and she has several concerns She points out that the store would be within five hundred feet of a park, and makes similar points to some of the other testimony concerning the character of the neighborhood. The other ca, the other letter is, uh, Liza Ponier and Bruce Clendenning, six Morton Street in Concord, um, they are opposed to the request. They are opposed to the request. They believe the store does not belong in this location. This is next to transitional housing. The limited parking concern that was raised by other neighbors. Increased traffic concern. Concern with the character of the neighborhood. They believe it's not appropriate for the requested use. And the last one is Cheryl and Chris Simmers. Corner of Morton and Harrison. They point out that neighborhood children walk by on their way from Abbott Downing or Runlet. Concerned that this is not a neighborhood-friendly use. And would change the character of the neighborhood. And they expect the store to have greater volume of use than the existing and past retail uses. These letters are on file, should anyone wish to see them. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed and invite the board to discuss the case, starting with Mr. Winters.
Well, I, you know, obviously, there's, there's a lot of opposition. And frankly, I don't, I don't begrudge the neighbors for feeling how they do because I'd probably feel the same, I kind of do feel the same way, to be honest. I'm not a gun enthusiast and I don't, you know, I don't buy or use guns myself. So I, and it's obviously a major national issue. All that's valid, but we have to look at the application. It's a special exception, so it doesn't, it doesn't require a variance. And I think that it's a very small space. I mean, 600 square feet is probably, probably about the size of this little chambers area here. I mean, it's a pretty small space. It's just pretty limited, the amount of people who are realistically going to be shopping there at a time. And I, I don't think it's going to really change the character of the neighborhood because I just don't think there's going to be a huge impact of people coming in and out based on what they represent. So I'd be inclined to to grant the special exception.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I too hear and appreciate the concerns of the Abutters and the neighbors. But as Dr. Hutton pointed out, we can't regulate what is being sold. Retail sales are permitted by special exception in the district. I didn't hear any testimony that made me believe the requested use would create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety. There is onsite parking, there is off-site parking. I appreciate that there are parking demands already in the neighborhood, but this would be true of any retail store going in there. Deliveries are not going to be made by tractor-trailer. They're going to be made by UPS-type trucks. And the limited parking is non-conforming and just continuing in the existing configuration. There's going to be no changes to the building that would affect the public or private water or drainage or sewer system or any increase in the stormwater runoff onto adjacent properties or streets. So I think that criteria is satisfied. I do not believe the requested use is going to create excessive demand for municipal police, fire, or solid waste. Police might patrol the neighborhood more often, but honestly, I would think that would help address some of the safety concerns that have been raised. And given all of the safety measures that are going to be taken with regard to the building, particularly the locking up the inventory when there's no one on site, I'm not concerned about the other safety issues that were raised. You know, obviously, the big one is whether the requested use will create hazards to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. And based on the sketch that was provided, you're not going to be able to see the guns through the window. That's where the T-shirt display is going to be. And I appreciate the concern about the bars on the windows and the doors. But again, it's a permitted use. And if that's what's required for the permitted use, I don't see how it impacts the neighborhood in a detrimental manner. And because it's a permitted use, I think it's consistent with the spirit and intent of the ordinance. So I too would be inclined to grant the special exception.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
You filled in all those blanks.
Did you get all that, Tracy? I write that.
Write all that down. I'll explain in a moment why that's important. Mr. Monahan?
I have nothing to add to it, Laura.
All right. And Mr. Wallner?
Well, I struggle with the out-of-character with the adjacent neighborhood, item seven and criteria for special exception. But, but I'm afraid I have to agree with with my fellow members.
All right. I agree with my colleagues as well. The, the issue of the use is obviously a contentious one and of great concern, and that's not to be dismissed. But we also, as a zoning board, have limited purview and we have to respect that as well. And we cannot decide what gets sold. That's something the city council can address, but we, we do not have that authority. To go back to why I was thanking Ms. Specter Morgan, there's been a recent legislation passed in the State House building across the street that requires zoning boards to enumerate in detail its reasons for granting or denying both special exceptions and variances. And that is what Ms. Specter Morgan was doing by way of laying out the details of her views on the specific requirements. And the rest of the board, in concurring with her, were essentially repeating that. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we grant the special exception because for the reasons and the findings of facts stated in my discussion, all of the special exception criteria are met.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the special exception is granted. The next case this evening is double zero seventeen, 2022, 911 Lake Street, R O R N Open Space Residential and Neighborhood Residential Districts. Anderson Shawn Michael owner? Is that Shawn Michael Anderson or?
He is Shawn Michael Anderson.
Shawn Michael Anderson, owner. Owners wish to execute a lot line adjustment to transfer the rear acreage to 369 North State Street and request.
Mr. Chair, could we ask them to step out for a moment?
Yes. I was so busy enjoying the sound of my own voice, I didn't notice. Thank you, Dr. Hutton.
You may have to close the door. I guess it's okay.
The owners wish to execute a lot line adjustment to transfer the rear acreage to 369 North State Street and request a variance to Article 2841H, Table of Dimensional Regulations, to allow a resulting lot to persist with a 65.95-foot frontage where 80 feet is required. And is Mr. Anderson here? Good evening, sir. Oh, no.
Mr. Sargent is.
Mr. Sargent is here. And Mr. Sargent, do you swear as usual to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you identify yourself with the record, please?
Well, good evening. My name is Mark Sargent. I'm with the firm of Richard Bartlett and Associates. And I'm here representing Swenson's Granite Company and Shawn Anderson. The property before the board this evening, there's two. The Anderson property is located at nine through 11 Lake Street. It's on map 393Z as Lot 9 and has 65.95 feet of frontage on Lake Street in an area of 12.41 acres. The Swenson Granite Company property, which I'm sure everybody on the board is familiar with, is on 369 North State Street. It's map 50Z, Lot 7, has frontage on North State Street and currently has an area of 187.27 acres. What these folks would like to do is a lot line adjustment between the two properties, which would annex 10.02 acres of the Anderson property to the Swenson property, leaving the Anderson property with 2.39 acres, increasing the Swenson property to 197.29 acres with no changes in the frontage of either parcel. So the variance that we are seeking this evening is to Article 28-4-1H, which is the required frontage. In this zone, 80 feet is required. The Anderson parcel, which was created back in 1909, has 65.95 feet of frontage. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The.
Can you show me on the map what you're trying to do?
Yeah, I'm having a little trouble understanding exactly what's happening.
Tracy, you get the, our plan?
Yep.
I'm never good with these pointed things.
You don't have to use it, I just.
Why don't you just go up there?
You can stand up.
Yeah.
I'll stand up.
No, no, no danger, no danger standing over there. So we're, the new lot line would go?
I'll show you if our plan comes up, okay?
Okay.
Is this the sheet you want or the other sheet?
That's the one I want. So. All right, so, you know, this is Swenson's over here.
Yeah.
Lake Street down here.
Right.
The Anderson piece is kind of, you know, this is a 1909 subdivision, all these lots were created.
Right.
And the Anderson kind of got what was left in the back. So their piece is this one here and then it kind of spreads out. It goes all the way back here, so it's 12 plus some odd acres. And so what Swenson's would like to do is buy this much of it, consolidate to their parcel. The Anderson piece would, would, this would be the new lot line in here, so they'd have the 2.39 acres. And the only, you know, the glitch here and the only reason we're here is that this lot was created prior to zoning. And it doesn't have the 80 feet of frontage that is now required.
Okay. I noticed the topo looks fairly extreme here.
It is. But we do meet the, the criteria for the buildable and usable areas, Chris.
So it's a steep uphill behind the house, houses there?
It is.
I see. And then does it level off?
No, it continues to climb up.
All the way up to the quarry?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good. Are there questions from the board? Andrew?
If you know, what are the, what does Swenson intend to do with the new property that?
I have no idea. I was just hired to do the lot line adjustment.
Okay, and the Anderson, right, it's residential, I'm just?
It is a residential property.
Nick, any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do. My name is Sandra Patel, P.E.T.E.L.L. I live at 53 Lake Street. We own other properties that are but, properties on Lake Street and North State Street. If you will allow me to read into the record, I may take more than the five minutes, but I think I have enough neighbors here that will allow me a minute or two of theirs. If that would be okay?
If you are speaking for everybody?
No, I'm not. I, I just, it may take me more than five minutes to read. Is that okay?
As long as it's relevant?
It is very relevant, sir. And I will provide you with a copy of it.
Okay.
Thank you. Dear Chairman Carley and Board members, we received, and I speak now for my husband and I, we received a notice from the zoning board regarding the above matter. This case involves a request for a variance to allow for a lot line adjustment from Shawn Michael Anderson to transfer rear acreage to 369 North State Street. From the first reading, it appears quite simple. But once further investigation is done, it becomes apparent that Mr. Anderson wants to sell the backland to Swenson Granite Works at 369 North State Street. That was not indicated in the, in the notice, but we now are aware of it. As residents of Lake Street and property owners, we strongly urge the zoning board to deny this request for a variance based on the following reference to the application for variance, nine and 11 Lake Street, as submitted to the board by Richard D. Bartlett and Associates, LLC, on behalf of Mr. Anderson. And if you'll allow me, what I've done is the actual application that was submitted to all of you, I just numbered them one to five so I could refer to them on, and I will provide you my copy. So the first paragraph says on the application, the application states, quote, "The variance will not be contrary to the public interest because, colon, the proposed lot line adjustment will have no change to the frontage of the subject premises." This may be true at the current time regarding the frontage, but if this owner or a future owner decides to sell this property to Swenson's, giving them full access to Lake Street, a residential neighborhood, it certainly could change the frontage of the property. Keeping two acres of the available 12 acres is not going to protect properties from being impacted by the sale. It is unknown, and I do, I did just hear from, I believe, Mr. Bartlett, he does not know either what the intent of Swenson's is. And that is in my little statement here. It says, "It is unknown as to what Swenson's intentions are for the 10 acres of land. Could it be for dumping of excess waste, roadways, storage of material, or cutting granite? But with the extreme amount of drilling, blasting, cutting of granite that has accelerated over the past couple of years, it is unimaginable that Swenson's is looking to be a good neighbor and purchase this land from Mr. Anderson just to hold on to."
May I, may I interrupt you for a moment?
Please, yes.
The board can only address the facts that are given to us and the proposal that's given to us. We can't make a decision based on speculation about what might happen in the future. And we are not granting anyone, any exemption from the restrictions of the zoning ordinance now or in the future other than what is specifically contained in the variance. So your concerns about what might happen in the future, unfortunately, is not something that's under our control.
Sure, and thank you for that. I do understand that. And we, as neighbors, know, we have no idea what will happen to it. May I continue, sir?
As long as you're not continuing down the lane that you've been in already.
Okay. Let, let me jump over to what I feel is extremely relevant, which would be, I'm calling paragraph number four. I will read it as it was proposed. Says, "The values of surrounding properties are not diminished in granting the variance because, quote, 'The proposed adjusted lot line will have no impact on surrounding properties as the results will not change the current use of the subject parcel.'" My response to that is, this statement is completely objected to and is the underlying basis for requesting the variance be denied. If the variance for the lot line adjustment is approved and Swenson purchases the 10 acres, that completely changes the current use of the subject property. It's open land right now. Currently, the subject parcel holds a duplex apartment building with living space on both sides of the building with 12 acres of land in the rear, which travels along some Lake Street Abutters back properties. If the current zoning law requires 80 feet of frontage, why should this request be an exception? In the event the variance is granted, this paragraph is very untrue in that our property values are being affected daily by the impact of the blast, the impact, pardon me, that the blasting is having on our homes by way of damage to foundations, ceramic tiles, general shaking of land with homes on them, and not to mention the overall impact of the quality of life. We have elderly neighbors, we have newborn babies, and we have lots of wildlife that are all truly impacted by the current activities at Swenson's. Please take this paragraph into serious consideration before issuing a final disposition on this appeal as the transfer of 10 acres would allow Swenson's to perform additional commercial business in our backyards. And the last paragraph, which I refer to as number five in their application, sorry, I'm losing my. Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result. I'm losing my, hm, "Literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship if the ordinance is not granted because," semi, "denial of the variance would result in the applicant not having the ability to annex a portion of their parcel, which they have no use for, due to the configuration of the lot frontage which was created almost one hundred years ago." That's from their application to your board. My response to that is, literal enforcement of ordinance should be applied. It is difficult to understand how an unnecessary hardship, quote, "would fall upon Mr. Anderson, because when he purchased the property, one would believe that he understood he was buying a duplex with that frontage and twelve acres of land in the rear. Myself, my husband and I, and another set of neighbors who are here, both looked at purchasing this duplex. We reviewed the property prior to Mr. Anderson purchasing it, and we fully understood that the land was part of nine and eleven Lake Street, the backland went with the house." It is stated that property owner has no use for the land. I am not quite sure that blasting granite out of the ground, possibly storing slag or other potential work products...
Again, we're into the territory of speculation.
Okay, can I, I, I have one sentence, may I finish it, sir?
Yeah, please do.
I, I just want to let it be known, whatever they do with it, understand that it is extremely close to all of our homes. It is extremely close to the reservoir, Long Pond, also known as Pennacook Lake. And yes, it's true, the lot configuration was created almost one hundred years ago, that we understand, along with many of our homes that are over a hundred years old. I thank you for your time. I entertain questions, I have no knowledge, other than being a neighbor, a homeowner, um, and that's about all I have to offer. We find it would be, I find and my husband, a true detriment to our neighborhood, it is an old neighborhood.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Uh, quickly, Ms. Patel, what's your address on Lake Street?
Our home is at fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
We, would you like to know, we own other properties there too that would be affected?
I'd as well say.
That you rent out?
Pardon me?
You own properties that you rent out?
Yes, we own twenty-seven Lake Street, we own thirty-eight Lake Street, we own forty-three Lake Street, we own fifty-three Lake Street, we owe six Quaker Street, and we have four hundred and four oh two North State Street, all within the parameters of Swenson's.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. May I provide you with a copy?
Certainly.
Right.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard?
Thank you.
Do I see Anne? Yes, please come forward. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
May we have your name for the record, please?
Stacey Brown, and that's S.T.A.C.E.Y. Brown.
What would you like us to know, Ms. Brown?
Well, I am the city councilor for Ward Five, and I am here in that capacity. I was contacted by the Patels in, on December fifteenth because of this area. There, the ward lines have changed and Ward Five extended to the Pennacook Lake area. So, that includes the Pennacook Lake, Swenson's Granite, and Lake Street and North State Street, uh, to the west side. They contacted me because there has been excessive blasting, and they didn't know what to do. So, I have been looking at, at Swenson Granite and this area and talking with, um, different lawyers, talking to our, the city solicitor, and I have talked to the former city engineer regarding this, because this is impacting my constituents. It's affecting their homes. These homes were built, um, of the twenty-three homes on Lake Street, nineteen of them were built around the same time that Swenson Granite was, um, started, eighteen eighty-three. They were all, these were probably the homes of people who worked at Swenson Granite. They're from nineteen hundreds, eighteen eighty. Um, so, these homes were there when since Swenson Granite started, when they, if you look at the logo, it's a chisel and a mallet, and that's how they operated their business. And it was a small business, but things have changed, and that's when the Patels contacted me, because in the last three years, there has been excessive blasting.
Could you, could you speak to the issues on the specific request here?
Yes, so specifically, specifically, I am here to oppose, uh, the variance, which will allow the transfer of rear acreage to Swenson Granite. And thank you Chairman Carley for bringing up the topography of this area, because I have been paying more attention to it, and if you drive down North State Street and you look behind Corvo Ruthier, Ruthier, it looks like it's going to come down on you. And I just want to share with the board, this is from the city's...
Thank you.
Aerial to, aerial, um, views from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty. The purchase or, of Swenson Granite by Polycor happened in twenty sixteen, and you can see that a few, four short years later, they expanded their operation to the property lines. Now, this variance is with the intention of transferring the back ten acres to Swenson Granite. That's showing four years later, we can expect that they will push all the way to the property lines, bringing that operation that much closer to the Lake Street homeowners. And that's why I'm here. I'm really here in support of my constituents. The damage due to this increased blasting, it's going to be ten acres closer to them, and as, um, Mr. Bartlett stated, it goes uphill, and Guy Patel has told me that he has seen boulders rolling downhill. The city engineer, David Cedarholm, told me that he was concerned there was no alteration of terrain permit. So, there is, they still do not have one, uh, and you can see from the pictures that I've sent you, they have absolutely altered the terrain, and these families have lived there, the Patels have lived there, their whole lives. And I really think that the nature, that is a historic neighborhood, the nineteen, nineteen homes built within twenty years.
You're covering ground you've already covered. Can, can, can you enlighten us any further on the specific details of this frontage request?
This, if you grant this frontage request, it will further reduce property values, because as the picture shows that I, I have sent around, it's going to bring, the intent is to transfer to Swenson Granite. So, we have to look at what will that transfer do to the value of these homes, and it will depreciate these homes, and that would be tragic.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Was there a hand? Okay. Yes, please come forward. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Trevor Berry.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Berry?
Um, well, first apologies if I don't abide by decorum, this is my first experience with local government. Um, I, I came here tonight to get answers to my questions, um, so, just by observation, it seems like this is more information from me to you all here, um, but...
But if you have questions, you should ask them, and we'll do our best to get them answered for you.
Okay, I, I mean, my, my primary question was, what, what is Polycor Swenson plan to do with that, uh, that area that they want to purchase? Because I, I can tell you, as someone who recently purchased Seven Lake Street, which is a, a direct abutter to Shawn, Shawn, um, uh, if, if there was quarry activity in my backyard, you know, like, less than a hundred feet from my back door, I, I wouldn't have been nearly as keen to buy it, I may not have bought it at all. I deeply value the forest behind the house, um, it's, it's my favorite thing about, uh, the home that I recently bought. Um, I can also tell you, there's an abundance of walking trails on, you know, like the Concord property, um, and, you know, something that I've witnessed over the summer, and I wish I grabbed pictures of it, I didn't know that it would become relevant, there's a tremendously large pool of water, um, you can kind of see it from North State Street, um, and over the summer, they had these huge, like, six-inch diameter pipes, and they were pumping up, uh, water out of that large pool, and they had these massive, massive sprinklers, all, uh, set up at the top of that hill, looked to be right along the property line, and just blasting, like, hundreds of, you know, to thousands of gallons of water out at a tremendous rate, and you could see that this chalky substance, uh, made its way all the way down the hill, and I've got a, um, um, one, there, I don't know what you call it, a French drain in my backyard, there's like a little channel that catches runoff and it goes along, uh, all the, all the properties that, um, uh, you know, are, are on that side of Lake Street. And, yeah, wha- whatever's in that pool, you know, it's definitely not just water, it's like, looks like milk, um, you can see remnants of that running all the way down the hill, and I, uh, I go walking also at the little preserve right across North State Street.
We're, we're, we're over our five minutes, and we're not talking about frontage.
Yes, okay, yeah, apologies again, this is my first experience with this, um, but yeah, uh, without repeating myself, I, I have that concern that if, um, you know, that activity was even closer, that would lead to, I don't know, more detriment on my property.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? Anyone else like to be heard? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
May we have your name, please?
George Harrington.
Please have a seat. What would you like us to know?
I would like to know, is, is it, my understanding that what Swenson's does with this property is irrelevant, as far as you're concerned, the board?
Yes, it is.
Well, the problem is it's totally...
Our concern is the front issue of the frontage and whether or not a variance is justified.
But for those of us who live there, it's, it's the issue.
I can understand that, and I would not denigrate that.
We live on thirty-nine Lake Street, right at the junction, a T intersection with Quaker Street. We have a well fifteen hundred feet up on the hill. It's on city property, it's been there a hundred and twenty-five years, and it's never run dry the seventy-six years I've been there, since I was five years old, and, uh, we don't want to lose it.
I understand that, sir. With all due respect, the testimony you're giving us is not helpful in make, helping us make a decision here tonight.
Well, I just wanted to give you my opinion.
And we accept that, and thank you for it. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward. You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Sure, my name is Megan Breznerhan. I own a home at fifteen Lake Street, which was built in eighteen eighty-nine, and I've owned the residence for about three and a half years. Um, and I'm to understand here that, um, you can't speculate on what Swenson will be doing with that property, but I'd just like to share the point, and I hope that this is unique enough to contribute to the, the record, um, that, uh, since the new company has taken over, um, Swenson's, as my neighbors have noted, the blasting has increased, and we have had issues with the foundation of our home, which again, eighteen eighty-nine, these, these are, these are recent issues, cracks in our ceilings, um, cracks in our, um, upstairs, uh, shower, the tiles, we've had to have it repaired three, replaced and repaired three times. And so, I know we can't speculate on what they're going to do on the land, but this company has increased their activity, the, it, the intensity with which their, their work is impacting the neighborhood, um, and so, that's, that's just the concern that, that I wanted to share, that, that, um, we do have some information about what will occur and how the work there has been, um, uh, increasingly intense and amplified and impacting the community already, so we know that that's going to, um, increase the likelihood that that will continue and impact the, again, the value of the homes and the, um, quality of the neighborhood and community.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Please come forward.
While she's coming forward, could I ask Dr. Hutton a question?
Sure, of course.
Dr. Hutton, if the Swenson activities are expanded onto this property, would they require site plan review?
It's a conditional use permit from the planning board, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please have a seat.
My name is Linda Gallagher.
What would you like us to know?
I'd like to say that one of the reasons my husband and I purchased our property at thirteen Lake Street fifty-five years ago was because of the neighborhood, and the fact that we were assured at that time that there were, the zoning, uh, of the property behind us was such that it could never be developed or used any differently than, as far as I know, as it is in use now, which is no use, because it was watershed. That was the reason we were given. And it has been a, um, blessing over the years, that we've been able to enjoy that environment that we purchased into back fifty-five years ago to enjoy. I understand with the sale of this property, that it would change the zoning of that area...
You're mistaken, ma'am.
Or the use of that area.
It, it, we are, we do not have the power to change the zoning, that can only be done by the city council, and they have not made that request.
Well, I, we were told that it could not be developed in any way, because of the, it was rural, residential, and...
I, you, that, you may well have been told that, I don't know what the regulations are for that particular piece of property, I suspect Dr. Hutton can help us with that.
Well, my point is that to, to change the ownership would change their ability of use, and that would sadden me greatly, that it would change our neighborhood, uh, in many ways over time, and I don't feel that we're being given enough information by lawyers and the property, that people who want to purchase the property, to give us a really open understanding of their intentions.
Thank you for your testimony.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Any comments from code enforcement?
So, I, I don't know if the board wants me to explain why this is in front of you or not, I'm willing to do that for the benefit of the audience.
I think, I think you should, yes, please.
So, when this lot was created a hundred years ago, it was created with sixty-five feet of frontage, which was then a permissible thing. Because the lot line changes, it changes the so-called birthday of the lot, so, even though it was built a hundred, developed a hundred years ago, its new birthday is now, because the description of the lot in the deed will change. So, nothing about the lot is changing, it's just that the rear line is changing, creating a, a inconsistency with the front lot on Lake Street. So, nothing in the frontage, that sixty-five foot dimension on Lake Street is changing, but because the rear lot is changing the description of the lot, it becomes non-conforming to our eighty-foot frontage now. So, it's not about what's being developed on the lot, more that there, we're fifteen, fifteen feet short along Lake Street, and that's the only reason, is that we're changing the description legally, nothing else is changing, the zoning is not changing, it's, um, the front is actually RN and the back is RO, so the RO is remaining in place, that will not change. If Swenson expands, they are required to get a conditional use permit from, um, the planning board. Alteration of terrain is a state permit from DES, and that is dealt with at the state level, though the city is often kind of apprised of what's going on there, but that is a state permit, um, and so, you know, the, the city departments are aware of, of the other things that are going on in that lot, but those aren't things that this board deals with. The only thing this board deals with is whether or not that sixty-five feet of frontage can remain sixty-five feet of frontage, as it always has.
Another question for you, let's say, um, that it was Swenson's or some other person just purchased the lot outright...
Mm-hmm.
And used it for whatever they wanted to use it for that was with, that was allowed, that, then that wouldn't require a, a variance, right? That, then the, the frontage issue would...
So, that, 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 the frontage, the frontage issue is what it is in that zone. The back piece can only be transferred to an abutter, because transferring it to anybody else would have a no frontage, and so, it would be non-conforming with that respect. So, the only thing you can do with this back line is keep it with the front lot or put it to the back lot, and you're just changing the legal description of the lot, you're not changing any dimensions.
But what Andrew's asking is, if the entire lot, without a variance, was sold to Swenson's, they wouldn't need any city approvals? they wouldn't need any city approvals?
Nope.
Because they wouldn't change the lot. It's only because they're changing the lot that the front-
Because they're changing the description, yep. Sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Yeah, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Sargent, would you like to offer factual clarification in response to anything you've heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of, a mind of things. First, I'm not an attorney. I, I'm just a, the humble servant here. And, uh, I would just reiterate what, what Dr. Hutton has said, that any other approvals for the, the change of use on this property or construction or whatever, uh, Swenson's, and I don't need to tell this board here, it's more for the audience, whatever Swenson's wants to do out here is going to require additional city and state approval. So there'll be ample of time to, to, to hear what they're going to be doing and for the neighbors to, to put in their two cents' worth. I don't agree that the transfer of the property will, or the transfer of this will devalue any property because it's essentially what we're proposing right now isn't going to change anything. It's just going to change that lot line. And lastly, you know, and I will respectfully disrespect, or not disrespect, but respectfully have a different opinion on the, the frontage issue than Dr. Hutton does. Um, you know, in the past, we have done lot line adjustments in the city of Concord under a different regime there and the frontage didn't re, uh, meet current code and, and weren't required to have a variance. And I've actually got two lot line adjustments I'm doing in two different towns now where it isn't an issue either. Um, but, you know, um, Dr. Hutton wanted to do this. We've made the application. We also will be going to the planning board if this variance is granted. So there'll be, you know, another opportunity for the neighbors to, to, to pipe in about this, but certainly, you know, it's all about right now just a lot line adjustment, not a change of use on the property, so.
And you're, you're not asking us to overturn?
Not, not at all. No, no, we, we made the application. I'm just stating my piece. I had that little discussion with Tracy at one time and-
So basically you're saying in your opinion, you don't think you really need a variance?
I, I don't think I need-
But you are asking for one.
Yeah, we're asking for one, but I, I don't think I need one because I, like I said, I've, I've done it. I've, I've worked in Concord for close to 40 years. I've done it several times without a variance. And currently I've, I've got two surveys I'm doing in different towns, same situation, no variance required, so. But, thank you for your time.
You're welcome. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed and invite the board to, uh, consider the case. We heard testimony that the, uh, appellant would like to subdivide the property and in order to do so requires a variance because of a pre-existing frontage limitation. Uh, the newly subdivided property would go to a owner who has frontage on another street and doesn't face that problem. Uh, we also heard testimony from the neighbors that they have concerns about the future use of the property that is being, would be annexed by the Swenson Granite Company. Mr. Waller, what do you think?
Well, certainly, uh, any, any future development by Swenson's would, would be addressed properly by the city, but I'm, I'm still struggling to be persuaded as to what the hardship really is. I don't know if I've been persuaded enough that there is a hardship that exists.
Very good.
Yeah, I was gonna read the hardship issue as well. It seems to be self-imposed, that the owner's creating the hardship by changing the lot lines, so.
So you don't see a hardship related to the peculiar nature of the property?
Oh, that is correct. Laura?
Let me start by saying I completely agree that a variance is required here because when you change the dimensions of a lot, it is no longer a lot that exists at the time the zoning is adopted and therefore it's not protected. That being said, it's another hard one because the abutters all have really serious concerns about what the potential use of the property will be. Unfortunately, those concerns are not ours to address. Those will be addressed by the planning board should Swenson decide to expand its business onto this property. For this request, we're not even looking at the lot line adjustment. We're looking at the frontage issue and the insufficient frontage exists now and is not being changed by a single inch. So I think the purpose, the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance are both met because there will be no change to the neighborhood from the frontage. Substantial justice is done because there is no gain to the city by denying this frontage variance where that frontage already exists versus the loss to the owner. The, will be no diminution of surrounding property values because again, the frontage exists and isn't being changed. And I think there is a hardship because this lot was created pre-zoning and therefore does not have sufficient frontage. So I think there is a hardship that results from the land. There's no way to get that additional 15 feet. Um, and since the, it has not been a problem for the 100 years that it's been there, I don't see how it's going to be a problem going forward. So I would vote to grant the variance.
Mr. Winters?
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I mean, I think, I don't think the neighbors' speculation about the use is unfounded, given all the testimony we've been hearing about, the allegations that Swenson's has kind of been pushing, pushing the, the envelope in terms of their, the intensity of their use. Obviously, they might have their own opinion, but they're not here. But, but from everything we've heard, there's a, there's a major, there's a major point of tension here that, uh, the neighbors, I think, are legitimately concerned about. So I do appreciate their testimony on that point, but I mean, we're, we're only looking at 11 Lake Street. We're not looking at the Swenson's property. And the, if anything, making it the, the, it's smaller, you know, if any, if anything would, would need less frontage, although, you know, the, or the same amount of frontage, it doesn't really change the use of the people at 11 Lake Street in the amount of frontage they need if they didn't have that, if they weren't allowed a variance for the amount of frontage there, then they'd have no use of their property, which would be a hardship. So I, I agree with, with Laura.
Can I ask Laura a question?
You bet, of course.
Unless you, you wanna get the last word, so.
Well, if, if you ask a question after I speak, then you get the last word.
So-
Go ahead.
I generally have the, you know, tolerance for non-conforming if you, if, if, um, uh, it was created by the city or whatever. But when things come forward, when people are changing their lot-
Yep.
Uh, there should be an effort to try to make it conforming. You've seen me do this when people come in and-
Yeah.
You know, uh, I don't want to bear into the details, but oftentimes that's my case. Like, okay, you have it non-conforming, but now you're gonna take some action. That's the time to make it conforming.
Right.
And so it's certainly the, not the time to, you know, as I said, create a self-imposed hardship by dividing the lot, so.
But the, the hardship doesn't relate, in my opinion, to the dividing of the lot. The hardship relates to the frontage. If they had 15 more feet of frontage, they wouldn't be here. They don't have that and there's no way for them to get that. And this lot has existed for 100 years. And since there's no change being made to the use of the property as a result of the variance, I think the hardship is inherent in the land.
But, so the property owner, when they purchased the property, understood that there was a non-conforming frontage?
I have no idea, but I assume so.
I presume that. So probably didn't buy it 110 years ago.
Right.
Okay, all right. I understand what you're saying, but I'm still not convinced that the hardship is not self-imposed.
That's why there's five of us.
Uh, I, I also am sympathetic to the owner's concerns and the reason that I was firm with people who were persistently testifying to that is not because it's not important. It's because we have no control over it, no authority over it, and therefore should not be spending our time considering it. And, uh, what we do have control over and authority over is the specific question of whether or not a variance is justified, given the question of the frontage. And I am, uh, uh, I think in agreement with Ms. Specter Morgan and, uh, I think, Mr. Winters, you also were, um, in that category. And where were you? Nick, you were also. No, you're not, right. Uh, I would be inclined to support a motion for a variance because I think, uh, there is a hardship created by the fact that the zoning ordinance came along well after this lot was created, notwithstanding the fact that the person who owns it, uh, may have known that his lot was substandard or may not at the time that he bought it. Uh, the likely uses for the other property are something that other boards and other authorities will deal with. We are not empowered to do that and we're not equipped to do it. So, uh, but we are empowered and equipped to rule on a variance and I would be inclined to support one for the reasons that I gave. I think there is a hardship created by this. I don't see, uh, that any, um, violation of the spirit of the ordinance or the intent of the ordinance takes place because nothing changes. And, uh, that's true of, of the other points that Ms. Specter Morgan made. Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion fails. Uh, is there another motion?
I will make a motion to approve the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I'll, I'll just say it's, it's probably not technically relevant, but I think since so many people came, it, it's worth saying that I, I, I hope, I, I take the, their statements very seriously and I hope that it is investigated by the people at the city who have, you know, have the purview over the intensity of the use at, at Swens. Because when you have a pretty major industrial use right next to a neighborhood, there, you know, that should be reviewed. I just don't think that's our authority.
Agreed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
The vote is three to two. The variance is granted. You bet. Five minutes break. I ran my eye down this. I have the mics on. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please take care of your sidebar conversations outside so that we can continue the hearing? Thank you. The next case is double oh eighteen dash twenty twenty-two seventy-five seventy-seven Fort Eddy Road, GWP Gateway Performance District. Daniel Brennan for Concord Plaza, DBA NNP Associates, RT Tenants. The applicant wishes to construct an eight-foot by eight-foot addition, a walk-in cooler on the rear of an existing building, resulting in the reduction of the adjacent two-way travel lane from 24 feet to 18 feet in width, and requests a variance to Article twenty-eight seven seven E, minimum aisle width, and F driveway widths to permit an 18-foot drive aisle where a 20-foot drive, four-foot drive aisle is required for property located at seventy-five seventy-seven Fort Eddy Road in a GWP Gateway Performance District. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but? May we have your name, please?
Dan Brennan.
What would you like us to know?
Uh, well, Pinedera's changed his menu a little bit. We had to add a cooler. We had no room to, inside the existing restaurants who were proposing an eight-by-eight exterior cooler in the rear of the, uh, strip mall as shown on the plan.
And you have made this request before, correct?
Yeah, the pandemic put everything on hold, so we're back.
So you're, you were granted a variance, I believe, and it expired?
Correct.
Okay. That's why it seems familiar.
Has anything changed-
No.
-in your proposal? Would you touch on the high points for the benefit of anyone here who is unfamiliar with the case?
I don't really understand the question, like, but-
Tell us what you want to do and why.
We want to build an eight-by-eight cooler in the rear of a strip mall. Where I was there for a while, all the traffic does go counterclockwise, although it's a two-way. There's hardly ever a chance of cars going past each other at that cooler. There's also existing dumpsters up against the rear of the building that exceed the eight feet. Not that that's relevant. They probably shouldn't be there, but, but, you know, so I don't think it's gonna hazard at all.
Very good. Questions from the board?
So the cooler's attached, is it, it accessed from the interior of the building?
Correct.
So it's almost like an addition, but it's a cooler?
And what would be the traffic lane that would be, would be left when, when you were done instead of 24 feet?
Eighteen.
And it would still be two-way?
Correct.
Okay.
And could 18 feet actually accommodate two, two-way traffic?
It does. I mean, 18 feet works, but 24 is the code.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm just trying to read the hardship.
Okay.
There's a letter on that. I'm just trying to absorb that.
There's a, a letter with that one?
Wasn't there? Was there something dealing with the hardship?
Yeah, there's a letter. It supposedly deals with the hardship.
Is it Tracy's letter?
This one?
Yeah.
That one I?
Yep.
Oh, it's a letter on behalf of the, of the, uh, appellant?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, where they wanted more room to talk. Got it. Is there anything else you'd like us to know, Mr. Brennan?
Uh, no, about it. I wish I remembered what I said last time because I got approved. It was so long ago, I can't remember.
So I'm looking at the, I think it's kind of the, is it, what divides the, that, I'm looking at the picture of your site there. It's kind, I don't know if it's shrubberies or, you know, is it?
No, there's no shrubberies. There's, there's parallel parking that goes to the-
Something seems to be dividing parking from the travel lane.
This, what's-
Well, these are-
Yeah, what's that?
Yeah, that, that's a strip, but there's, there's parallel parking right there.
Uh-huh.
So the measurement from the cooler to the edge of the parallel parking is what's 18 feet.
Oh.
You know what I mean?
What's the measurement to the strip? Do you know? Sorry.
Eighteen plus nine, I mean, 24 plus nine would be that strip. So they're nine foot.
They're nine foot, five?
So it would be, it would be 27 after you put out your cooler.
If the parking-
Right, to the edge of the strip, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what the plan shows. Do we know parking spots, so?
I also mentioned that in my letter, but I don't advise removing spaces, but because of another thing I had to do to get spaces, we actually have four extra spaces. So you can get rid of a couple of parallel spaces, it becomes a problem. But we like those spaces, so we move those stuff, so. There's, there's a way around it if you had to remove a couple of parallel spaces with a cooler. But, but as I said, the, the, not that it makes- spaces with a cooler. But as I said, not that it makes it right, but there are dumpsters located like right there that exceed more than our cooler. Well, not that that's an excuse, but people get by it all the time, no problem.
Unfortunately, everyone does it is not an argument that we can.
I know. That's why, that's why I said.
That we can base a decision on.
Although it's wrong.
Do you work for Panera or for the owner of the?
For Panera.
Strip mall? Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Brennan?
Is it pretty much all Panera traffic going through there, or does this impact the other tenants?
No, other tenants take their deliveries back there. But as I said, when I was doing the survey and everything, I hardly seen anyone come, and typically it's counterclockwise. I don't know why. I did recommend four years ago, I'm gonna say making it one way, but they didn't like that idea.
They, meaning the tenants or the landlord?
You guys, the town, the city.
The city, okay.
And you said it's mostly employees who park back in those parallel parking spaces?
Yeah. But again, we took, we ended up getting more spaces at the lower site to make the building comply parking-wise. So there's actually four extra spaces now, but.
So you could get rid of those two spaces?
We could get rid of them if we had to, but we'd rather not.
Thank you very much.
What, Tracy, what's the, instead of letting it lapse, they could have, isn't there that rule they can ask for an extension?
You can only get a one-year. They would have.
Even if they tried, it's too long, okay?
We're too long.
Okay.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
Just a couple of points of clarification. So if they remove parking, they have to go back to the planning board because that would alter their site plan. So this request, their planning board approvals that they, that they received were conditional use approval for a condition that already existed. So that was remedied and didn't expire. The only other approval they need at this point is architectural design review, which they are going to go ahead and apply for from the planning board. But the way it's proposed, it's you and ADR. If they change parking or any other criteria, then we're adding another board. Not that that's part of your, I just want you to understand the impact. So if, if, if you do want that, it does require them to make another stop. Not that that, just a point of information.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request to allow the construction of an exterior cooler on the back of the building in which Panera Bread is located. We heard testimony that the board granted exactly the same request two years ago, and it expired due to limitations on approvals. And we also heard testimony that the traffic could still function in the 18-foot wide lane. Going to start with Ms. Specter Morgan on this one. You're up.
I really wish you hadn't told us that you could remove those two parking spaces.
I think a lot of, I think that a lot of our ideas are.
Because the fact that you can remove those two parking spaces, for me, removes your hardship. And I appreciate you'd have to go back to the planning board to amend your site plan. And I appreciate that I voted for this last time, but I don't think I knew that those two spaces could be removed. So I think the other criteria are all met, but I don't think there's an unnecessary hardship that arises from the land anymore. So I would not be in favor of granting the variance.
That letter's a copy from before.
Okay, I don't, I don't remember that.
Everything's the same. I just don't, they.
Jim?
Yeah, I'm not far off of where Laura was. I'm just trying to recall, there must have been some reason that at the time I found it.
Acceptable.
Acceptable because of the need for parking or something. So I'm going to listen to what others have to say before I just have.
And maybe we could continue our deliberations to the next meeting and review the minutes in the application from the last time if we think it's relevant.
Nick?
I remember approving it, but I don't remember the, we dealt with the hardship issue. I guess if we remove the two parking, so I remember parking is an issue in that whole complex, and it always has been. And removing two parking spots, I think, would add an additional hardship.
But they have four extra spots.
Yeah, but I'm trying, as I recall, I think part of the issue is because of the way that is confined, that with the lack of parking, people kind of do loops around the building, particularly at lunchtime when people are trying to get into Panera. So it would make that extra traffic around the building more intense if there was fewer parking places.
Yeah. Because I think they got a variance for the, they don't meet the, the number of spaces required. I think they, they hope they got the variance a long time ago.
No, he said there were four extra. They resolved it.
Yes, but I think overall for.
Oh, 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 okay.
When you combine all the tenants there, that I don't think it met the parking requirement. So I think any reduction of parking spaces is just going to exacerbate that.
No, they're complying with regard to parking now. I'm not sure if you, so the reason for the 24 just isn't for cars. It's for.
Delivery trucks.
Trucks. And so just sort of take that into account. You know, when you're thinking of your criteria, just think about what problem you're addressing, because it sounds like you're struggling with which problem is the worst problem, I guess I'd say. But the vehicular, the, the patrons vehicular traffic isn't what the 24 feet is meant to address. It's to address larger trucks, emergency vehicles, those sorts of things. So I'm not sure that taking parking spaces to, isn't, to accommodate patrons' vehicles does anything for you, just in terms of site plan.
Yeah.
But again, this is something, because it has to go through ADR, you can send it to the planning board for their opinion before you make your decision as well. If you, if you're going to take the month to review your minutes, you could also ask the planning board for their opinion at their next meeting. And not that you have to take their opinion, but just to get sort of a, what do you guys think, since you have to look at this too?
Andrew?
My sense of that location is that the parking is, is tight, and especially you've got a lot of people going in, trying to park and get takeout orders. I think it would be helpful if they can use those two spots for employees to leave parking up front for the customers who then don't have to try to go around. So I think that it would, little enforcement would result in unnecessary hardship to, to the extent that it would, it would require them to, to lose those two spots. So I, and I think that it was already stated that the other criteria are met, so I'd be inclined to, to approve.
I'm, I'm inclined to approval as well. I see the logic in the, in the, in Ms. Specter Morgan's argument. However, in this case, I think it's more compelling to allow the applicant to have as much parking as he thinks he needs on his property. The intent of the ordinance here with the 24-foot lanes, as Dr. Hutton pointed out, was to allow for full-on two-way traffic of any conceivable vehicle in and out of a driveway, and that is not what's going on behind this building and never will. So I think the intent of the ordinance is met. There's no benefit to the public by allowing or by denying this. The public is not affected by it one way or another. And it is the configuration of the lot that creates the narrow spot. Certainly, the use is reasonable. A cooler on the back of a restaurant is a routine, a routine use. So I would be, I would be inclined to support a motion to approve. Anyone care to make a motion in either direction?
I'm not sure where this is going to go, but I move to approve, and I think, I think Chris just laid out the requisite findings. So I think all criteria are met based on what I turned, how hard this is.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I believe you have convinced me.
I am really impressed.
[laughing]
In that case, I'll call for a vote before she changes her mind.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted, or re-granted in this case. You're welcome.
Are those your glasses?
And there's so few cars in those.
Are those your glasses?
Up here.
In those parking spaces?
Yeah, there's, in that picture, there's like.
Yeah.
Two of them's not going to do anything.
I'm just surprised to me that there's no cars in the parking lots when the.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's daylight.
It's very early in the morning, apparently.
It must, it must be early in the morning and high summer.
Yeah.
Because the, the shadow's not long, but.
Leap off.
Although it's.
Leap off. Photos. So it's got to be fall or winter.
I was wondering that, too. There's not a single car in there, is there?
Yeah.
It's a good picture for you.
Maybe that was done during a pandemic.
Yeah, maybe it was pandemic.
Who knows? Okay. Next case in the, on the agenda this evening is case 019, 0019202260 South Main Street, UT Urban Transitional District. The Roman Catholic Bishop of Manchester is the owner of this property and is seeking a variance to Article 2872E, Table of Offstreet Parking, to permit 155 parking spaces where 486 are required to Article 2841D1, Front Yard, to permit a concrete pad within the front yard setback, and Article 287-1, General Provisions, to maintain the existing non-conformities with respect to the parking and loading in the remainder of the property outside the redevelopment area. Gentlemen, would you swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes.
Would you please identify yourselves for the record?
I'm John Arnold from Warren, Reno. I represent the applicant.
I'm Father Richard Roberge, and I'm pastor of Christ the King Parish, the applicant.
What would you like us to know?
So basically, the, the church is looking to tear down its existing food pantry, build a new building for the food pantry in its place. Just to briefly get you oriented with the property, Tracy, do you mind, do you have the, either the GIS or an aerial handy that we could start with?
Yeah, I just had it up. It is right there.
Great. So the property, it's a, it's a large property. It's almost a whole city block comes around like this and then up around these residences here. And so to give you a layout of the property, this is basically the existing church building. St. John School is up in the corner. There's a rectory, community center, administrative building scattered around the site. This right here is a food pantry that exists today. It's basically a 1,500-square-foot house that was built around 1900. For the past 20 years or so, it's been used for the food pantry. The, maybe if we can go back to the site plan for a minute, Tracy? Thank you. So the, the new food pantry is basically going to sit in the, in the same general vicinity, the existing buildings right here. This is the new building down here. The area of development is what's shaded, is what is outlined with the dashed line. That's where basically all the construction's going to happen. Outside of that, there isn't going to be anything that's touched on the site. There's a second area of development up here, also shaded and outlined. That's not really related to the food pantry directly, but in, in years past, there was a separate building there. It was a barber shop, and it was torn down a little over a year ago, and right now it's just kind of an open, unpaved area. So as part of the site work that's going to happen with the food pantry that I do would be to go in, to pave that, add to the parking lot, clean it up as well. Everything in terms of the construction that's happening in those two development areas complies with all the parking requirements. So size of the parking spaces, aisle widths, parking lot landscaping, all of that is compliant in both of those areas. And I think what I'll do now is I'll turn things over to Father Rich just to speak briefly about what the food pantry is, how it operates, and so on, and then I can address the variance request.
So first of all, I'd just like to thank you for taking our, our, our case. So I'm pastor of Christ the King Parish. And so in 2011, three parishes were merged together. So St. John the Evangelist Parish, which is that campus that we're looking at now, Sacred Heart Parish, which is on Pleasant Street across from the federal building that was sold and now is condos, and St. Peter's Parish on North State Street, which was torn down to make a pocket neighborhood. So the merger took place in 2011 and became, the parish became Christ the King Parish, but the church on our campus is still St. John the Evangelist, so the name of the church stays the same. Brief history of the food pantry. The food pantry on campus, on the campus of Christ the King started over 40 years ago in the 1980s as a ministry of St. John the Evangelist Church and parish. It was called St. Vincent and Paul Food Pantry. It started in the rectory back porch. It moved to the rectory garage. The rectory is our residence and office building. It then expanded to Berry Hall basement. Berry Hall was a former convent, large convent, but then it was turned into a junior high, and then relocated in its present location for the past 15 to 20 years. In 2011, as part of the merger, the St. Vincent and Paul Food Pantry at St. Peter's Parish was merged with the present food pantry and renamed as Christ the King Food Pantry. The present food pantry is a small 1,500-square-foot two-story house with a basement built in 1900. The food pantry uses the first floor and basement. It is not barrier-free or handicap-accessible. It does not have restrooms for clients. It only has a restroom on the second floor, and is reserved really just for the volunteers. Clients need to, clients need to meet in an open area to give their private information. It's a very small area, so when they come in and give their private information, there's no private space for that. During COVID, all the clients had to wait outside and were served through the door. We have limited refrigeration and freezer space. A new one would expand that ability. And, and all the cases of canned goods and dry goods are stored in the basement, which means that they have to be brought down a narrow staircase and then all brought back up for distribution. The food pantry serves an average of 550 individuals each month, providing food for 6,500 meals. Our clients are made up of individuals with limited income, and the underserved, working poor, homeless, new Americans, refugees, and immigrants. The food pantry operates four evenings a week, Monday through Thursday, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. For many years, the food pantry has hoped to expand and improve its facilities. We want to serve those in need with dignity, and we also want to facilitate safe and more effective facility for our volunteers. In 2021, we received a bequest from the Teresa Downing Trust for $1 million, and this major gift prompted us to begin planning to build a better facility for our food pantry. Along with this bequest, we were approved for a CDBG grant of $750,000 through the City of Concord. The new facility would be barrier-free so that clients who have limited mobility will have access to our building. It would also facilitate easier movement for our volunteers, not needing to negotiate stairs and having to, having more adequate storage. We will use the, a store model for our clients. So right now, we, during COVID, we put together boxes for a family of one, a family of two, et cetera, and we asked them size and information, give them a box through the door. And before, people would come in and our volunteers would put together a box for them. The new model would, would create a, like a store type of environment where clients will work with a volunteer, go through, and pick what they want. Oftentimes, some of our clients get in food that they can't use, either because of diet or because of their culture. And so sometimes on the campus, we find they take what they want and they leave the box there so it gets recycled, you know? They're hoping that someone will pick it up before it freezes in the winter or gets overly heated up in the summer. But this will be a store type of model. The new facility will also allow us to have space to take care of our clients in a more personal way. We have two small offices to meet with clients for more confidential gathering of information. We will provide a restroom for clients and volunteers, as well as a prep sink and a table to prepare fruits and vegetables that are donated. Right now, we don't have any of that. In regards, it will also have a custodial room with a slop sink to take care of cleaning the facility. Everything will be on one floor, so a lot of our older volunteers won't have to go up and downstairs. It'd be much easier to bring things in and out. In regards to parking, the campus is home to St. John the Evangelist Church, St. John Regional School, both the elementary and junior high, and the food pantry. There has never been a time when there has been any major conflict for parking. We've always had sufficient. there has been any major conflict for parking. We've always had sufficient parking on our campus. There has always been sufficient parking. The food pantry seldom uses more than twelve spaces, and they're only open at night when the church hour, the church hours and the school hours are, are closed. We have ample parking. The only exception to that might be Christmas and Easter, when everyone comes out of the woodwork, you know? And, and the church is full, and the parish center is full. But other than that, we don't have a hard time with parking. The parish has an effective scheduling process that manages its buildings and parking. The food pantry provides a very important service to the greater Concord community, and we appreciate the support of the City of Concord. I can answer questions.
Jump into the variance criteria?
Please do.
So the application details everything. I just wanna highlight a few points. First on the parking variance, the request is for one hundred and fifty-five spaces where four hundred and eighty-six are required, and I guess the first thing to point out is that with the redevelopment, we're adding twenty spaces to the site. So today, there's one hundred and thirty-five. With this project, there'll be one hundred and fifty-five. The second thing is that, that we don't really expect significantly more parking demand as part of this development. As Father Rich said, right now, the food pantry serves, you know, roughly thirty-five individuals in a given evening. That is about twelve cars in the parking lot at any given time, and the, the new building isn't expected to bring in a lot of new clients. The new building is expected to improve the layout, improve the function of the food pantry, and better serve those who go to it. So there's not expected to be any significant increase in parking demand over what exists today. The next thing is that the use classification applied by the city for this building to calculate the parking is a public assembly use, and I think that's the most intensive parking requirement that's in the ordinance. It's one space for every forty square feet in the building.
Which building are we talking about, Mr.?
The food pantry.
Okay.
And so that, that equates to one hundred and thirty-two spaces required for this food pantry. As you heard, it, you know, averages twelve cars, and it only operates during the evening for a couple of hours, so one hundred and thirty-two spaces plainly out of the ballpark for the type of actual demand that this facility will see. And then, just in terms of the site itself, you can see from the layout, there's a number of different uses on the property, a number of different buildings. The buildings date back to the late teen, late eighteen hundreds in many cases, and there's really not an area on the site to add more parking than what we're doing with the twenty spaces, and certainly no way to make the parking entirely conforming for the number of spaces, even if it was just the church. There aren't, there isn't enough room to put enough spaces on the rest of the property just to serve that use. But again, the thing about the parking is that most of these uses operate at different times, so the times when the, the food pantry has folks coming to it are gonna be evenings when the church and the school aren't operational, and vice versa. On the sidewalk variance, so on the site plan, I just wanna point out the area. You can see, so you can see what we're talking about. Specifically, it's this corner at the front of the building, where the sidewalk is this kind of wider area. The, the main reason for that is that the entrance and exit to the building are right here at the corner, and so it's expected that folks who do drive will park in the parking lot, come down the sidewalk, and come in here. But a lot of folks who come to the food pantry also arrive on foot. They walk, so we expect a lot of foot traffic from both sides of South State Street. We expect folks may begin to pull into the driveway, and a passenger may hop out to, you know, get in line or go into the building. So it's expected to be an area where kind of all the foot traffic converges, and you have people going in and out, and, and that's the reason why the sidewalk widens right there. If it were a narrow sidewalk, the belief is that people would still converge, but they would wander off of the sidewalk, either onto, you know, area that's hard to maintain, or they trample landscaping and make it generally unattractive at the entrance to the building. We, I had a lot of discussion with Dr. Hutton about this variance request before we filed it. We have filed the variance application. We had a disagreement on whether a variance was required for the sidewalk, a respectful disagreement. I, I appreciate working with Tracy and understand her position. But I did note in the variance application that we would like you to consider, before you get into the variance criteria, whether this variance is even required. It's our position that it's not, and the reason I say that is because the zoning ordinance prohibits buildings and structures within the front yard, and that's what we're dealing with here. I don't believe that the zoning ordinance defines a structure to include a sidewalk, and I understand the city's objection to this particular area of the sidewalk relates to its width. Apparently, there's no objection for the sidewalk that comes in from the parking lot, but there isn't any distinction in the ordinance that defines, or says rather, that if you have a sidewalk that's six feet wide or less, it's not a structure, but a sidewalk that's more than six feet is a structure. So I think it's consistent with city practice to treat sidewalks as not being structures and not needing variances when they go through the front yard setback, and you can see that when you look at basically any building in the city. They have a sidewalk that comes from the front road up to the front door of the building, and even on this site plan, you can look over at the, the front of the church building on Main Street, just, I think it was a couple of years ago, we were in, getting variances for this reconstruction up here, got some signed variances, and you can see the sidewalk within the front setback here is very wide. It was reviewed by zoning staff at the time, no variance was required for that. You know, if you go up the street a block, you've got the Capital Center for the Arts, that has a wide meandering sidewalk that goes up to the front of the building. I'm not a hundred percent certain. Dr. Hutton can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't believe there's any variance granted for that. So in any event, we'd ask you can consider that issue. We respectfully believe a variance isn't required. If a variance is required, you know, we believe it's warranted because of the heavy foot traff, traffic in that area generated by the use. The reality is that that area where this sidewalk would go today is a paved parking lot, so it's not gonna change the character of the neighborhood. It's not gonna impact property values. I think overall, this would be an improvement to the area in the property by putting the sidewalk in front of the building, having a safe access for pedestrians to go in and out, and would certainly improve the way things look today. On the third variance, we're asking for permission not to have to bring the entire parking lot into compliance with the parking lot design standards, and the reason for that is, as I mentioned at the outset, the areas of development that are shaded, we're bringing all of those into compliant, compliance. The parking spaces will be the right size, the setbacks are observed, aisle widths are observed. The remainder of the parking lot outside of that is quite large. It's a hundred and something parking spaces. It's been there for decades and decades without any operational issues, and the task of trying to bring that entire parking lot into compliance would be very significant, cost prohibitive, very challenging for the site. The existing non-conformities, I'd say, are relatively minor. Some of the parking spaces are a foot or two feet too short, foot or two feet too narrow. Isle width for the parking lots are, again, a foot or one or two feet too narrow in places. The parking lot spaces don't comply with the setbacks to the road. In most cases, they come right up to the lot lines. So to correct that type of thing would be reconfiguring the whole parking lot. It wouldn't be as easy as just restriping. There'd be site work that would be needed, and it would certainly result in the reduction in the total number of spaces, which we're already asking for a variance on.
Would you be required to do that in order to do this project?
So that's an interesting question. We've applied for the variance. I don't think it's clear that we would have to do that. I think the provision on non-conforming uses in the zoning ordinance may give us some protection here. As a matter of historic practice, I can tell you that when we were in here a couple of years ago for the Brixmore project, for the one-ten grill down on Store Street, and the Starbucks down there, that we had the same issue, and it was Craig Walker at that time had us put in the same variance request, so that when we did that project, we could just look at the development area for the one-ten grill and the Starbucks, and not have to worry about bringing the rest of that entire Market Basket Plaza parking lot into conformance. So for those reasons, again, this was a directive from the city then, and now we're, we're going along with that. We're putting in the application and, and just trying to work through the process, but I'm not sure that it's clear that a variance is required, because I think there is some grandfathering protection to the existing areas that aren't being touched.
But it's not crystal clear.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. I apologize for interrupting, but I didn't wanna forget the question and get all the way to the end.
No, good question. I mean, I think that's, that's basically what I had. I'm happy to address any criteria in more question, in more detail if you have questions about it, or you want me to, but I think that's it.
I have a question for Dr. Hutton. Can, can you give us your rationale for why this patio area would be considered a structure?
So I'd like to make a comment before that.
Okay.
It's your discretion whether or not you take up the issue as to the patio slash sidewalk area. Mister, sorry, Attorney Arnold was consulted. He chose not to file an administrative appeal of that decision, so that is not what's before you. So it's your discretion whether or not you even take up the issue as to whether or not the variance is required, and this in no way preserves any appeal rights on his behalf, given what you do. So I think perhaps before I get into defense of my position, you should discuss whether or not you're gonna take up that issue.
What happens if we don't?
If you don't take it up?
Yeah.
Then it goes forward as his application for a variance, which is what he applied for, as opposed to administrative appeal, which is what that is somewhat similar to.
But we would have to make an affirmative finding that no variance was required.
You would indeed have to make, yeah.
That wasn't noticed.
Correct, because this is not an administrative appeal.
Right.
And that's legal.
And that's legal.
That's legal.
Yeah.
Okay. That's what I was just gonna say. We didn't, we don't wanna litigate this issue. It's, it's not a major issue, and we're trying to be cooperative. We think the sidewalk makes sense. We hope that you agree, but we would, the Supreme Court allows the board to decide at the outset whether a variance is required or not before it actually grants the variance, and so rather than appeal it, we're saying here, we've applied for the variance, but we don't really think a variance is needed. If you agree, you don't need to go through the criteria.
So that's a de facto administrative appeal, isn't it?
Well, not really, because I can't, I can't appeal that decision. It's not an administrative appeal in the sense that you can take it up and decide if you want, but I haven't preserved any appellate right to, to take that up and litigate the issue.
So that's what Tracy meant, when she referred to preserving your right to appeal.
Yeah, and we don't dispute that.
Okay.
I have a, I have a quick question on that. I mean, and when you have a, a lot like this that takes up an entire city block, what, isn't the, what's considered the quote "front yard"? Isn't the whole thing the front yard?
Each, each street frontage?
Each street frontage, okay. So up until where the building is on each side?
So are you trying to define where the front yard is for the setback?
Yeah.
So it's this dashed line shows where the front setback is, so it's basically this area of the concrete from that dashed line up to the, the front of the street there?
Okay, thank you.
If I may just, in Concord, anything that's on a street is a front, so you could have three fronts and no backs in Concord. That's the way our ordinance is, is constructed. So I think that gets you, like, everything that's on a street is a front, regardless of if it has a back or side or otherwise. It just has a lot of fronts.
Yeah.
Which in the past, we've considered to be, in some cases, a mitigating condition.
Correct, but I mean, that's just the way your ordinance is constructed, just to clarify.
Okay. What I'm wondering is if, for the sake of efficiency, we shouldn't take up the question amongst ourselves before we go any further with our discussions with code enforcement about whether or not they need a variance for the terrace, or, because if we decide they don't, we can drop that issue and move on to other things.
So what's prohibited from the setback? Structures or buildings?
Structures. And generally speaking.
Yeah.
Sidewalks are the width required for pedestrian bicycle travel, non-vehicular travel.
Five feet or more.
Correct.
Sometimes.
So when the planning department and the code administration department looked at this particular piece of impervious area, it, and it was originally called a patio, seemed more analogous to us to be part of the building as opposed to part of the sidewalk. So we were referring to it as a structure.
Well, there is an interesting question, for example, with the, would, would you look at that bricked area that runs from Main Street up to the front door of the Concord Center for the Arts as part of the building, as a structure?
So this area is intended to be a place for people to gather, I believe I just heard, which would be more analogous to a patio, which is part of a building.
But people gather on that Capital Center area too while they're waiting to get the building.
They do, but again, this, as a wraparound to the structure.
Yeah.
Appeared to be structure to us.
Is there any definition of a patio?
There is not.
Okay.
And I would, I would just clarify, and to the extent I didn't say it correctly before, this isn't meant to be a, a gathering area in the sense that, at least I think the way a lot of people think about a patio is that it would have seating, or it would have features, or people would be hanging out there. This is more of an area where people are lining up to go into the building, or walking around each other to get in and out, and hence the people coming from different directions needing more space to do that.
Can I say something?
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
I think, we talked about a barrier-free area, and there are people that come with wheelchairs, and, and so, you know, you're talking about a larger, a larger item when you're talking, bring, bring someone with electric wheelchair and all that stuff. So it's really to accommodate the people who are coming, the people who are serving, and again, I, I know all the jargon about patio and sidewalk and all that stuff. I don't think it takes anything away from the neighborhood or structure.
Right, and I called it a terrace just to confuse things even further.
And then in the same, I'll just get done before Dr. Hutton was here, but at the, the front of the church, right, you've got the steps, and then you have kind of a terrace.
We have a ramp that comes all the way up.
Yeah, but there's kind of a terrace. That is not considered structure, right?
That, that's right. That's what I was saying, is when you look, you can see it on the site plan. It's an area that's probably as big as what we're talking about here, but that wasn't.
Probably bigger.
Right, it wasn't.
Bigger, and then it has also a wall. We have a huge wall, you know, and then, then a ramp that comes up, you know?
Yeah.
All that was approved.
And is, is there a glossary definition of structure?
Yeah.
There is, there is one, and I do have the standards for a ramp and accessible entrance if the board is interested, because again, this is larger than that is required for complete barrier-free accessibility.
Second page here.
So your position was not that it in and of itself was a structure, but that it was part of the building?
Building, correct.
And this, this is a quote from the ordinance?
Accommodation, the structure.
Combination of material assembled.
In my application?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm reading the ordinance here. Combination of material assembled in a fixed location to give support or shelter, such as a building, tower, framework, platform, and the like.
Gotcha. I should've given this fine print closer attention when I read it first time. Very good. If the board concurs, I think we ought to address the issue of whether or not we need a variance here, and then move on from there.
I'm gonna take the position that unless it's noticed, we shouldn't just, I don't, I don't wanna set a precedent of people asking at the hearing that they don't need a variance. I, I don't, I think Attorney, Attorney Arnold's point is well-taken here, to be honest, but I just think that's gonna open up a precedent of, I think if somebody wants to appeal that decision, they should notice it. Dr. Hutton should be able to, you know, formally put in her opinion, and it, and it should be noticed. Otherwise, I think we should just proceed with what, you know, what was requested. That's my position.
In the absence of an administrative appeal, I am not comfortable saying this is not part of the building.
All right.
Yeah, I've seen in the past where we have said the variance isn't needed, but that's not, it rose, this is different, because the, the zoning officer kind of beforehand said so, so I, I kinda agree with you. I'd rather notice it and see it correctly.
Proceed with what we have.
Yeah.
With the variance.
Yep.
All right. In this case, I'm in a minority of one. So we will proceed with the request for the variance, and which means that we use the usual criteria for a variance. Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure.
So to address this front setback question, is there any way to push that building back on the lot, or does that cut into your parking and that's part of the parking?
Yeah, that, that's part of the issue, is that you move it back. It creates more accessibility issues, and it eats into the parking area.
Okay. And then on, you had mentioned maintaining parking space width, parking aisle width, but the, the planning department has raised concerns about being non-conforming in the lighting with regard to lighting, stormwater, and landscaping. Are you asking to not have to upgrade those to come into compliance as well?
So it's section twenty-eight-seven of the zoning ordinance, and that really deals with parking. So it's Section 28.7 of the zoning ordinance, and that really deals with parking lot size, aisle width. It does have landscape, like internal landscaping requirements for the parking lot, but I don't believe, without pulling it out, I don't believe it addresses lighting or drainage.
Well, let's pull it out.
So 28.710 is the landscaping, 28.79 is pedestrian circulation, and illumination, curbing, and surface drainage is part of 28.76. Oh, no, 7, excuse me.
And that's significant why?
It's significant because the illumination, curbing, and surface drainage are part of the section he's asking to be varianced.
Okay.
Which I believe was, yeah, the question.
Very good. And, and again, I think, I think you understand this, but just to clarify, everything within the development areas will comply with all of those standards.
Yes.
It's really the existing nonconformities out of that that we're looking to not touch.
Yes.
Point of clarification, did we see stuff on the lighting, curbing, and drainage for those areas?
I don't believe, I mean, the curbing and.
Well, I mean, you just said it was going to comply. I wasn't sure I saw that. I wasn't sure I saw that.
The planning board will see it, I'm sure.
Right, it'll be part of the.
Well, not if you variante it.
We're going to, if, the request is for things outside of the development area. So he's saying that the development area will comply with landscaping, lighting, stormwater, all that, and the rest of the site.
That's the way I read it.
And if we grant it, it will be limited to that.
Okay.
At least mine would be.
All right. Any, anything else you'd like us to know, either of you? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Mr. Halli. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I do.
Would you identify yourself for the record as you testified?
My name is Jonathan Halli. I'm with Warren G. Architects. I'm actually the designer of the building. I just want to make the clarification with regards to what you labeled as patio to the front. If I can just point at.
Yeah, of course.
So the issue is this. There is no handicap ramp. The building is all contained. The porch, which is handicap accessible to both sidewalks, is built into the sidewalk. So there's no rails, there's no nothing, there's no perception of a ramp. The issue is that we have to gain a walkway from this porch under the, under the brown across this area to the handicap parking spaces on this side. And what came up in discussion is there's a sidewalk on State Street. There's a five-foot walkway across here. My intention is that there will be a three-foot landscape green space in front of the building. What happens is then you end up with a two-to-three-foot grass spot, a five-foot walkway, and a two-to-three-foot grass spot. And, and the question is, when you have constituents that they're, they're, they're dealing with that line up, are going to step off into the grass, and it's going to become a mud spot. So what we proposed was just simply from this walkway to pave over the green spot connecting to the sidewalk. So it wasn't the intention to create a patio. It was just more of a realist approach to how people are going to gather and queue up to go onto this porch. That's really the issue. It wasn't that, so I don't see it as a structure. I just see it as just a sidewalk and a means to get to the front, and we're just trying to be real, real to what, how it's, that, that's just a clarification that I just wanted to make.
Thank you. Any questions in the board? Is there anyone who wishes, else who wishes to be heard in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard in opposition? And comments from code enforcement?
I don't think I have anything additional to add.
You did mention concern from the planning department in your write-up about the request for a variance.
Right, the, the city planner was concerned that the variance would preclude the planning board from addressing the issues of stormwater, et cetera, that we discussed on the site, because generally speaking in Concord, when you improve a site, you have to look at the whole site. And this is requesting not to do that.
Is it your take that doing what they're doing and getting the variances that they've asked for exclusive of that variance, the one for the, that would concern elements off the property that's being redeveloped, part of the property that's being redeveloped? Would that trigger a requirement to conform?
Say it again.
If, if they make these improvements and these changes,
Yeah.
would that trigger a requirement to bring the rest of the site into conformance?
Yes.
It would.
If they do these improvements, they are required to look at the entirety of the site for things like stormwater, illumination, curbing,
Okay.
paving, setbacks, landscaping.
Right, and then who decides what they would have to do?
The planning board.
Okay.
But if you grant the variance, you're robbing them of that ability. Not robbing, taking, oh, never mind.
Say robbing.
I'm getting tired.
Preempted.
It's been two and a half hours, I feel you.
Okay, thank you.
Could they come in, I'm sorry, could they come in for a variance for the, the entire property?
They could have come in with specific variances,
Yeah.
as opposed to a omnibus variance. They did not.
I guess I'm asking if they could have come in, rather than creating the two parcels within the parking lot, to come in for a variance for the entire parking lot and address the issues of illumination, curbing, interior landscaping?
They could have done a lot of.
They could have come here for that.
Yeah, they could have, they could, again, it's a bifurcated lot this way, and that's not the way that Concord usually addresses things.
Except for Starbucks. Well, we've done it before, I guess is my point. The Market Basket parking lot.
Right, but the, again, when it was, it was a variance request that was, had to meet all the criteria. It was requested that the entire parcel be reviewed.
All right, okay. Very good. Mr. Arnold, yes, please, come forward.
Just a point of clarification. Again, the reason we put in the variance and framed it the way we did to maintain the nonconformities on the site as like a blanket, blanket variance, it was just based on the precedent. We did that at Bricksmore on Store Street, and it was granted. And the reason we did it in Bricksmore is because it was done years prior in the same plaza when I think the addition, the buffet restaurant at the end of Market Basket was added on, that was the same practice. So we were just trying to follow the city protocols on that.
And I was correct in saying the variance you're requesting with regard to the nonconformities does not relate to the development, the areas of development. It's the rest of it.
Correct, yeah, exactly, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Very good. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request to allow a forgiveness on the parking for the overall site. We have another request for the concrete pad, which has been deemed a structure by code enforcement. And we have a request for granting blanket variance for the rest of the site not to have to come into full conformance. We heard arguments that the parking forgiveness is actually an improvement over the existing situation in that there will be more parking spaces, and they will be configured in a more conventional, which is to say code-compliant way. And we also heard the argument that the appellant made that the structure, such as it is, is, is not really a structure from the point of view of practical use. All right. Let's start with Nick.
You already started with me before.
I'm in the chair. I get to decide.
Yes, you do. I certainly think that the, the parking space is adequate at 155 for the current use. And I'm inclined to approve that. I'd like to hear the others on the, the concrete pad and
Okay.
the existing nonconformity.
All right. Andrew.
I'll, I'll start by saying I'm inclined to approve the variances. I think that, you know, it's, it's obviously an incredibly unique lot, both in terms of its shape, its size, its, its use. Practically a neighborhood in and of itself, you know, with everything that's going on there. And it's, you know, it's, it's what their, the food pantry has, has been there in use, and they're, they really want to upgrade it. It's not going to fundamentally change any other use on the lot. It sounds like it's going to improve the parking to some extent, but it's not really going to impact the parking. Although I, I didn't agree with turning it into a, a decision about whether they need a variance. I think the comments made about the, the fact that it's sort of a gray area about whether it's part of a structure or not, to me suggests that it is, it doesn't, you know, offend as much as putting like a structure right up against the road, especially in this neighborhood where I just don't think that's going to be out of the character of the neighborhood, even if you did put a structure very close to the road, because it's a, it's a busy road with a lot of uses and activity, and it wouldn't look out of line. And as far as the nonconformity on the other parts of the lot, I, I, I don't really think they should have to go to the planning board for the entire site, which is, which is, which is a historic activity on a church that they, I'm sure they are not really conforming with a lot of things, because it's been there for so long, doing so many things. I think it would be a necessary hardship if they couldn't improve their food pantry there without going through, you know, planning on every other element of the site.
Laura?
I'm also inclined to grant the variances. I think this is one of the situations where we're going to need to do three separate motions with three separate findings of fact. But the gist is that it's been there for a long time, and they're changing the building. They're not changing the use. They're improving the parking. They're going to come partially into compliance with the parking requirements in the development areas. And the concrete pad and the front setback, I agree with Andrew, given the kind of structure it is, and its tie into the city sidewalk, I'm not concerned about it being there, and I don't think it would. I think all the variance criteria are met, and I can do a better job of that in the thing in motion.
Very good. I am inclined to agree with my colleagues that I think the, certainly the lot itself is unique. With this particular compound, and much of the configuration dates well, back to well before the, before the ordinance. The fact that they are improving the parking seems to me to speak to the question of whether or not it's in the public interest and whether or not it's in the spirit of the ordinance. The intent of the ordinance is to have enough parking. They're making more parking and better parking. So I think the intent of the ordinance is supported there. As far as it being a reasonable use, they need a place to park. And given the fact that they have places of assembly as well as, well, they're all places of assembly, I guess, parking is, is an essential part of what they do. So I would be inclined to grant on the parking. On the subject of the so-called terrace or patio, I guess my feeling is that if it's a structure, it's pretty hard to see it as one. And it's certainly, I think the intent of the ordinance here was not to be building things in the front yard that changed the nature of, of, of the streetscape. And I don't think paving a section a little bit more widely, wider than the sidewalk would do that. So I think it's consistent with the intent of the ordinance, and I, I also think it's consistent with, I don't think the public benefits any from them having two strips of grass as opposed to a, a single one, and certainly their use there is, is reasonable. As far as the rest of it goes, I, I, I think particularly given the precedent that's, that, that we've set, although we're not supposed to set precedents, of not encumbering the rest of the property with unknown requirements that we can't predict, because they're made by another board under other circumstances, when we don't know of any major deficiencies that relate to zoning in any case in that, in those areas. I would be inclined to support the blanket variance as well. Anyone care to make a motion? I think Ms. Specter Morgan's suggestion that we take these one at a time is, is a good one. We've broken them out in terms of our discussion. Would anyone care to make a motion on the first variance request, which was for the number of parking spaces?
I will move to approve it, based on the findings of fact that Chair Carley just explained with regard to the hardship, the reasonable use, and the public, the purpose of the ordinance and the spirit of the ordinance. I will also note that there will be no diminution of surrounding property values, because we're, there's nothing that, about reduced parking that's going to reduce surrounding property values, and in fact, they're improving the parking. And there is no gain to the city from requiring them to try to add 300 more spots to this property that would not be outweighed by the loss to the applicant from trying to do so.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The vote is unanimous. The first variance is granted. Now the second variance, which has to do with the concrete pad slash patio slash terrace walkway. Is there a motion on that one?
I will move to approve that variance as well. I believe it complies with the purpose of the ordinance and the spirit of the ordinance, because it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. That area is already paved. It's going to remain paved. I do not believe there will be any diminution of surrounding property values from having basically a sidewalk in the front setback. There is nothing that the city would gain from requiring that the patio, sidewalk, terrace not be built there that would not be outweighed by a loss to the applicant. And given the, the shape of the lot and the location of the proposed pantry on the lot, which seems to be the only logical place to put it, I believe there is an unnecessary hardship.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? The vote again is unanimous. And now we come to the general provisions requirement. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will do this one too. I move that we approve the request to exempt the non-project areas of the lot from having to comply with the zoning ordinance, allowing them to maintain their existing nonconformities. Again, doing so will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, because the condition already exists. There will be no diminution of surrounding properties, again, because the condition already exists. There is no gain to the city that is not outweighed by the cost to the applicant, which there was testimony that would be a substantial cost. And the unnecessary hardship, in my opinion, is that that condition already exists. And given the various buildings and uses on the property, I'm not sure there's a way that they could come into compliance.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but note that we don't set precedent, but this is a unique property because it has such a unique frontage. It's been described as a compound or a campus, but it is a single owner, and I think that contributes to the, to the facts before us too, so I will second the motion.
And I would like to impose as a condition of this approval that the lots be merged, the three parcels be merged.
Right, which there, is their intent?
Yes.
Correct?
Did they?
Yeah, this is noted in the application. It's developing into a more, yes, for those three parcels, there's a more complex merger issue that's ongoing with the city right now that we're working through.
Okay.
Three Thorndike, five Thorndike, and 60 South Main Street be merged.
Yeah.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion? I believe it's been seconded. Yes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion is passed. The vote is once again unanimous. That brings us to our next case this evening, which is Case 0020, 2023. 34 Regional Drive, an IN industrial district. City of Concord is the owner. The applicant wishes to construct an aircraft hangar and seeks a variance to Article 2841F maximum height of buildings or structures to allow a 58-foot-high building where a maximum height of 55 feet is allowed. Gentlemen? We're fine. How are you?
Good.
Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, sir.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
I'm Jeff Lewis from North Point Engineering.
And I'm Evan Herron from Silver Maple Construction. So we are here proposing to build a 35,000-square-foot hangar over at the airport. It is currently zoned as industrial, which we are supposed to abide by a 55-foot height maximum. maximum. The owner really cares about the environment here, so we could, we could build this hangar with steel trusses and probably stay under the 55 feet. The reason that we're going over the 55 feet by three feet is we're actually building this hangar out of Glulam wood trusses, because it's more environmentally friendly, and there's a certain height that those trusses have to be to span 210 feet, which is the width of this hangar. So we are here looking for a variance to be able to build that at 58 feet and go above that 55-foot threshold.
Tracy, we have the visuals up there? All right. So I was just going to run you through very quickly, without spending a lot of time on this, just to orient everyone. This is obviously at the airport. And it is a potential lease parcel, so they'd be leasing this parcel from the City of Concord. It's a two-and-a-half-acre parcel, the whole, the overall airport's obviously 550 acres. So that, in the center there, that little red area is the subject area. It's right behind, so that's Regional Drive to the north of that. So there is a little access drive. If you go to the next one, Tracy, it's just an aerial. So that shows it again, the subject area. So just to the west of us is the big National Guard facility that they built off of Regional Drive there. That's the big building to the west. To the north is an existing private hangar, small hangar, and then we have a taxiway right to the east of us. So even further to the east is the Chanel Drive Commercial Development. So you can see we're pretty far into the airport here, behind the existing buildings, not adjacent to any other, you know, residential areas. And then our site plan, if you go to the next slide, is pretty straightforward. This is just now orienting us, so north is to the right, so the National Guard building would be to the, to the top of this page. And this is just, this is the 35,000-square-foot hangar building. It's an open, an open-air building, so as Evan described, they have the design that has this at 58 feet. It is industrial zone. The entire airport is industrial zone, so technically we do need to comply with the 55-foot height requirement. It's a 45-foot height requirement. Normally in the industrial zone, we're allowed to go 10 feet higher, because we're far enough away from property lines. We're not, we're not anywhere close to any of the property lines of the airport here. So we're allowed to be 55 feet. They are looking for a variance to allow us to go three feet higher than that, which would be the 58 feet. So our feeling is this is a building at the airport. I'm not sure that the, you know, industrial zone, really contemplated airport builders, the airport structures, the National Guard building, for example, is about 79 feet high, so that's about 20 feet higher than the building we're trying to build, and it's closer to the road and much more visible than we are. We're kind of tucked behind it. So certainly, a building of this height to, you know, accommodate and house the type of Gulfstream jet that they're proposing in there seems reasonable to us to not be held to the 55-foot height requirement of the ordinance at the airport. That's basically, we did have another slide that just shows the, shows the building, and so that's what it looks like. This is going to the planning board. We're on this month for acceptance of the application and next month for public hearing. We've been to the design review committee yesterday or the day before for input back on the building, so only positive input so far. So we're hoping that this doesn't, you know, impede on anyone, anyone, the public's perception of the airport, and we'll look for you folks to grant the variance, so we can move forward.
Questions from the board?
The unnecessary hardship has to arise from the land. What is it about the land that makes you unable to comply with the 55-foot high limit?
So the land is zoned industrial, as is the, is the airport, and I think that the land, it is a land at an airport. And what I would say is that the land being part of a municipal airport, the specific, I'm going to just flip to my hardship, so I can paraphrase it here. I think that the, the, that would be the hardship on the properties it is. It's already an existing airport, is what I would say, with structures on it that do exceed the height, the height limitation of 55 feet, in fact, well in excess of that. So I think that the fact that we are directly adjacent to a structure that's 20 feet higher than we want to be does support that uniqueness of this land being at the airport in the overall industrial district.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Yes?
The National Guard building is, it's not on the same lot, right?
The National Guard building was part of the airport parcel.
Oh.
It's, but it's a leased parcel, I believe. I think I could maybe answer that, but to be the same as this one, it's a leased parcel from the, from the, from the city, yeah.
Oh, so it is on the same lot?
Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's not on the same, I'm not, I'm not sure to answer that. My, my understanding is that is a parcel that the National Guard leases from the City of Concord, but maybe you can provide some clarification on that. Is that right? I don't know.
Mr. Walsh, come on up and wave, wave hello. You swear to tell the truth.
Always.
Would you identify yourself, please, for the record?
My name is Matt Walsh. I'm the interim deputy city manager for community development.
That's quite a title.
It is. It doesn't fit on a business card. So to provide clarification, the city is the owner of this property. The air, the Army Air National Guard facility that is located to the west is also on the airport property as a separate leasehold parcel. And the city, for way of background, has a letter of intent with United Therapeutics to allow them to go forward with this application tonight for Development Zone DZ3D, which is about two and a half acres, as Mr. Lewis mentioned, and there will be a lease agreement that's going to the city council on February 13th for a public hearing on March 13th. It's not public testimony, so I won't provide anything further unless you want me to.
Yeah, it's public testimony.
It's public testimony?
Well, I mean, you, speaking.
We're the, we're the property owner, so I guess I would point out that relative to height, the Federal Aviation Administration and the New Hampshire Department of Transportation Bureau of Aeronautics will be involved in reviewing the height here. So although the city also has its own height requirement in our ordinance, FAA and DOT have a role in setting what the height will be. I think in this particular case, the construction here, the, the city is supportive of the project. It's going to reap tremendous benefits for the airport and additional lease revenue, which will keep the airport financially solvent. The airport is a special revenue fund. It does not benefit from the general fund, which is taxpayer money. The, the airport is self-sufficient financially, and revenues here will help support the airport going forward, including future capital improvements. To Mr. Herron's comments, in this particular case, they are trying to build a project using sustainable means with Glulam technology, because they are trying to span approximately 210 feet of area, which is massive for open span using Glulam. They have run into this situation whereby the building's going to be three feet taller than what is permitted by our zoning ordinance. And that's unfortunate, because of the size of the airplane that is going to be hangered here, which one of them is a Gulfstream 600, which is very tall. It's a large plane, has a Gulf, a wingspan close to 100 feet. I think city administration's point of view would be, we're supportive of the project. Frankly, we're, we're more concerned about what the FAA and DOT have to say about height relative, not necessarily the zoning ordinance requirement, because that is not as, the zoning ordinance is not sophisticated relative to height, because of FAA was going to look at things like glide slopes and other, other issues that will come into play here. But we're supportive of the project. We think it's excellent for the community, and we are looking forward to United Therapeutics having a presence here. The benefits to the community are going to be tremendous. So.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just, I just want to, so the city's buying a Gulfstream?
That should not be the headline. The, the.
No, I, yeah, I really have a, I just want to get some clarity on the hardship, so not for you, Matt, but for, so Laura Specter Morgan asked about the hardship has to be associated with land. I'm assuming there's a reason that you want to go three feet higher rather than three, three feet lower. I mean, can you?
Why we want to go three feet higher?
Is there something unique to the construct, to the land that says you, we wouldn't depress the building three feet into the ground to?
Sure. It needs to be accessed from the runway and the taxiway that's already there, so we need to be at the level of the, of the existing taxiway. The building will be, will have a paved apron right onto the taxiway, so we're set back about the minimum we can be. The building will have overhead doors that open out, so we're, we need to have a level landing access to the taxiway, which is already existing, so.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Please come forward.
Swear to tell the truth. My name is Warren Rundy. I'm one of the others, the hangars up there. It's a condo association, which I'm president of. I've taken a pool as far as that goes. I'm also in the airport advisory committee for the city, totally in favor of it. I think it should be done, and I'll make it brief, and that's, that's all I have to say.
Any questions for Mr. Rundy? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor? Anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition? Any comments from code enforcement?
I just want to, all of these interior lines, as, as Mr. Walsh said, are lease lines. So when we did the notifications, it was the whole airport. So just to, and that's how we got to the height, so this is looked at as one big parcel, as opposed to looking at the interior line, just for clarity.
Which is why they comply with this.
That is.
Well, that will declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed and invite consideration by the board. I'll start at Andrew's end of the table this time. What do you think, Andrew?
Well, here again, obviously, an incredibly unique lot, and it's an airport. I think that the, the height requirement is likely, the purpose of it is so that the neighbors aren't disturbed by the building, but here, I think it's unique that they're so far away from any, you know, any neighbors other than the, the other airport users who, you know, aren't going to be bothered by this, and they're, they're much smaller than the National Guard use. And they could, they, they're barely over. They could comply, except for that they want to use more environmental practices for this, for the construction, which seems like a legitimate goal on their part, and it would be unnecessary hardship for them not to be able to, you know, take advantage of the modern technology to, to just go a little bit over. So I, I'm in favor.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I appreciate all the reasons everyone thinks this variance should be granted, and I appreciate it's a really minor variance, but I heard they can build a compliant building if they make it other, out of other materials. So that is not a hardship that arises from the land. That is a hardship that arises from the choice of the developer, and therefore I cannot vote in favor of this variance.
Why don't I suspect that?
I'm going to get myself booted off the board. I know I am.
Are you still willing to go, you know, play devil's advocate and walk us through the criteria that we would use if we were going to grant this?
Oh, the rest of them?
Well, if you've already said you're not, you, you said your piece, we don't have to go to the other ones.
So it's a south and post hardship, is it?
Aren't they all, Jim? They're all, as a result of wanting to develop the property. But here, I think it's, it's the choice of materials.
I'm, I'm going to contemplate this for a moment while we.
Sure.
I'm in favor of it. I think the hardship is that there's already an existing structure that's substantially higher than what they're doing, and for that reason, I think it's reasonable enough. I think it's such a minor increase of three feet, given the size of the structure, that I'm persuaded to support it.
And we'll note that that other structures are governmental land use that did not have to comply with zoning.
Does city?
City doesn't have to either.
But this isn't a governmental use. This is a private use.
What, what is the rule on that? Is that what it is?
So it's governmental uses on governmental lots, I believe. Usually when the city leases land, they require the leaseholder to comply, but I'm not sure we did in that case, because I don't know the history. Is it easy way for me to say, ask him?
I would like to see us have the National Guard come in here. I bet we'd be getting a lot of correspondence.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Well, wait a second. Matt might be able to answer that question.
And as long as he's up there, I have another question.
Yeah.
So.
We're temporarily reopening public testimony.
Understood. My understanding is that the guard property, there is a lease for the guard, and I believe the guard was required to comply with, to go above and beyond what is required by RSA 67454 and actually comply with our processes. So I do not know if a variance was granted back when the guard was built, which was in the early 2000s. I can't answer that. But I do know that the lease was requiring them to go to a standard that was above and beyond what a governmental land use would normally go through. Yep.
And the, for this project, their lease requires them to comply with city.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right. Thanks.
Rather than coming, why didn't, why isn't the city just amending the ordinance to make it 58 feet rather than coming to the zoning board?
We haven't contemplated that particular process. The other thing here where, whereby the FAA will get involved and the DOT will get involved, and, you know, the city has our regulation of what our height limits are, but they have their own separate height limits, so height limits at the airport are a little more complicated because of all of that. But we'll, we'll see what action the board takes, and then we'll go from there.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. No thank you. That's what I say to my grandson when he misbehaves.
There's some meaning to that.
How late is it? Anyhow, the, this one's a tough one in my mind. The, Ms. Specter Morgan's logic's impeccable here. The, the, it is possible to build this building in a reasonable way without going over by three feet. On the other hand, you can make an argument that the scale of an airport is, by virtue of the fact that it requires vast amounts of open area and large buildings, is, is different from most industrial uses and probably was not what was conceived of when the ordinance was developed. Now, theoretically, we shouldn't be speculating about what isn't in the ordinance, because somebody missed the boat, but in this case, I'd be willing to go out on a limb that could get sawed off and vote in favor of a variance here, because, A, it is a unique situation in terms of the lot, even though they could conceivably do it some other way. They could conceivably depress the hangar, but they'd have to do all kinds of fancy hijinks in the ground to deal with getting the plane in and out and drainage and so forth, which we wouldn't ask them to do. And because the variance itself is so minimal, as to be essentially invisible to anybody who doesn't happen to have measuring equipment and a satellite to use it with, I would be inclined to say that, to grant it and to say that it's not inconsistent with the intent of the ordinance, and also that there's no benefit to the public for not granting it considerable benefit to both the user and even indirectly to the public in granting it because of the improved construction methods. So I'm going to teeter out on that limb and say that I'll support the, a motion to approve. Anyone else have anything?
I'm going to move to approve based on the, the facts just stated by, and the reasoning just stated by Mr. Carley.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
The vote is four to one. Ms. Specter Morgan in the minority, the variance is granted. You're welcome. That brings us to our next and final case on the agenda this evening, which is double zero twenty-one dash 2023, Two Whitney Road, IN industrial district, Morale Mill Pond LLC owner. Applicant wishes to relocate and replace a freestanding sign and seeks the following variances. On Article 2869A, Table of Maximum Sign Dimensions for Non-Residential Districts, to align with, allow a sign with a total sign area of 124.98 square feet, where 40 square feet is allowed, by right and where 100 square feet was previously approved. a hundred square feet was previously approved by variance on January fourth, two thousand and six, and Article twenty-eight six nine A, Table of Maximum Sign Dimensions for Non-Residential Districts, to allow a sign with a height of thirty-five point six two feet, where twelve feet is allowed by right and where twenty feet was previously approved by variance on January fourth, two thousand and six. Ms. Rossio? You swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Would you please identify yourself for the record as you testify?
Laurie Rossio for Morrell Mill Pond LLC.
What would you like us to know?
I'd like you to know that Mr. Matt Walsh is going to do the presentation.
Oh. Mr. Walsh, you're still signed in from before.
Great. Tell the truth. It's very convenient.
Your password, your password is still good.
Well, good evening, members of the board. So we are here this evening for a property known as Conquer Crossing, which is owned by Morrell Mill Pond LLC, as you know. I realize it's a late hour, and we'll try and go through this quickly, but essentially why we are here, we are looking for a, an area variance for a sign and a height variance. And this is, all stems from the city's recently completed public improvements out there at the intersection of Whitney Road and, and US Route four. And as part of that project, we ended up having to, to take the Conquer Crossing sign that was shown there on the screen, which is about a twenty-foot-tall sign with a hundred square feet, and we had to remove that sign because it ended up in the middle of our new roundabout that is out there today. And as part of our original design plans, and all of this is in your thirty-three-page packet that we provided for you, all of this, our original design concept had us retaking that sign and reinstalling it at the top of, of a bank outside of, of the, the new roundabouts intersection. Tracy, if you can just keep going down a little bit further. And, and unfortunately, once we got into construction, we did not realize while we were designing this that being able to reinstall it on the outside edge of the roundabout would not be possible because we ended up constructing a very large, we widened an embankment through there and armored that embankment with large riprap stone, and that particular embankment has a two-to-one slope on it, so it's extremely steep. So as we were going through the project, we met with, with Mrs. Rossio and her husband and talked about various options. We've identified that we would like to install a new freestanding sign located, as shown on the, the photo there. The freestanding sign would be slightly larger by approximately twenty-four square feet, if my memory serves, with the height of it be almost identical to the original sign that was there. We're doing this because the sign will now be relocated further away from the, the pavement. You can see how the original sign was, was pretty close to the original roadway. However, because of the new intersection improvement, the new sign will be approximately fifty-seven feet away from the pavement, if my memory serves, and we are enlarging the sign to make it a little more visible, recognizing that it's gonna be further back from the pavement. There is a discussion in the, the, our application that talks about the, the criteria for variance. I'd be happy to go through that if the board would like me to, but I don't know if you want us to stop there and if you have any questions.
Questions from the board?
Like, this is obviously a relatively recent project, but you're, why was there a variance granted back in two thousand and six for this sign? Has there been a sign in use for, for twenty, for that long? Okay.
Two thousand and six, or two thousand and five, sorry. We, we, we bought the property in two thousand and five.
Oh. And even before the large expansion, you were using the sign for what was, for all of this? Okay.
That sign there, right. It identifies all the tenants in the Conquer Crossing property, which is about seventy-five thousand square foot building, so we have quite a few tenants, and that's essentially the tenant directory sign.
It's the only sign that's actually visible really from a right-of-way.
Other questions from the board?
The height is in part because the footing is below grade, right?
There's a fourteen-foot grade change between the street, actually, if you board through...
Photograph seven.
Yep.
Yeah, it shows up pretty well in these.
I'll keep going. That's us trying to build a road around a sign. Problematic. Photo number seven, one up. Put this up a little bit, Tracy.
Aye.
Thank you. So that's, you know, we're gonna plant the, the pylon for the sign right there where the arrow is shown. There's about a fourteen-foot grade difference there with, with that rock embankment is. At the end of the day, when, when we do this, the, the top of the new sign will be basically at the top of what the old sign was.
So you're gonna put this on the flat ground at the toe?
That's correct.
And it needs to be bigger so it's safely legible from the roadway.
That is correct.
I'm a little confused about these various options. Is that relevant to us?
I don't think so. If you...
It's just a color difference.
All right. So that's, that's, that's not a zoning issue?
No. You're, you're, you're correct. You're, those have nothing to do with height or area, but those are just things that the Architectural Design Review Committee will eventually see. Got it. Once we get through the process, or go through the process.
Any other questions from the board?
So it couldn't be illuminated?
Yes, it is internally illuminated.
Nick, anything? Laura?
Nope.
Andrew?
Electronic.
No.
No.
You're just a pot stirrer tonight.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. We appreciate your time.
The record will show that there is no one in the audience to speak for or against. Is there any further discussion comment from code enforcement?
There is not.
Code enforcement is also finished with this one. In that case, we'll close the public testimony portion of the hearing and invite discussion. I'll start this time with Nick. What do you think about this side request?
I think because of the topographical drop, you need to compensate for that to increase the height. When you have multiple tenants, I think it's always a visibility issue, so I think the added square footage is warranted.
Yeah, I think both the topographical reasons for the height, and then this is kind of a tricky roundabout. You don't want people having to take a second look to find out where this was to turn, so the larger dimensions are a safety issue, I think.
I completely agree. I don't think that granting either variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, so the purpose of the ordinance and the spirit of the ordinance are met. There are no surrounding properties to diminish the value of, and there is no gain to the public from enforcing either the height or the size, whereas the loss to the applicant from not having its sign is huge. So I would be inclined to grant, oh.
Andrew?
I agree.
As do I. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we approve both variances for the reasons we basically discussed.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous.
Move to approve last most minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. Does that take care of business for this evening?
It does.
Thank you.
We got a lot of work to do.
How did we do? Did we do okay?
Why is United Therapeutics...